Requirements of the open meeting law. Please be advised that this meeting is being broadcast live over the Lunenburg Public Access, not right now because we're having technical difficulties. It's also available on Zoom. The Zoom information is in the agenda. This meeting will be broadcast live through the Local Access channel and on the Public Access Facebook page, and will be found on the Lunenburg Access YouTube channel within 24 hours of the meeting. The agenda lists all the topics which may be discussed at the meeting are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair. Vote may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by the open meeting law. So we're going to take things a little bit out of order while we figure out the technical glitch with Zoom. In order to be effective and use our time efficiently, I am asking for a motion to do executive session out of order while they fix the technical problems.
Motion to enter executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the Chair so declares.
I second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, let's go.
We'll be back.[68.11]
David Thoreau and George Boutwell by analyzing primary documents and creating fictional conversations skits to perform for their classmates. This activity is part of their preparation for Monday's public book talk with Jeffrey Boutwell, which already happened. Author Boutwell, radical Republican and champion of democracy, taking place at 1:00 PM in the Adult Activities Center at the library. Teaching and learning. Last week marked the completion of universal screening in mathematics and literacy for our students in grades K through five. These assessments provide us with important baseline data to inform instruction and ensure we are meeting the needs of every learner. Our instructional leadership team has also provided thoughtful feedback on the core values as well as on the questions that will be used in our stakeholder surveys and focus groups. Their insights will help guide us in framing our community engagement work this fall. At the high school level, Lunenburg High School department heads and Mr. Santri are reviewing and providing feedback on the state's new competency determination requirements. This input will be critical as we adapt to shifts in state expectations and ensure that our students are fully prepared for graduation pathways. Our plans for professional learning were executed seamlessly in September 30th. This year, our professional learning will be building-based, designed to be closer to the learner and tailored to the specific needs of staff and students within each school. So, the high school worked with artificial intelligence yesterday, and Turkey Hill and the primary school worked with the consultant on our new literacy program. In addition, DESI is requiring districts to develop a policy for middle school exploration by November 1st. Given that we do not have three school committee meetings before that deadline, I will most likely need to request an extension in order to bring forward a thoughtful and well-developed policy for your consideration. Finally, we are moving forward with the rollout of our new data platform, which will begin with grades K, 3, and 6. As part of this work, MTSS data dives will take place at the primary school in Turkey Hill starting tomorrow and Friday, supporting our efforts to use data meaningfully to strengthen instruction and student supports. The business office, that makes it sound like it's a really big office. Chris has been working diligently to close out FY25, updating balances for all non-general fund accounts, including revolving and grant funds. At the same time, the FY26 budget is under review to identify potential cost savings and to address current needs across the district. Staffing is also being closely monitored, and a recent retirement has created savings that will allow us to replace a full-time paraprofessional position dependent on school committee approval tonight, helping us maintain critical supports for students. Finally, the team is comparing FY25 budgeted and actual expenditures with FY26 spending to date, providing a clear picture of where we stand through the first quarter. Mr. McNamara will expand on that later when he gives you his quarterly update. Our facilities update. At the middle high school, we are excited to welcome a new custodian. We had some resignations who will be joining the team on October 9th. Two evening custodial positions of full-time and a part-time remain open, and we are continuing our search to ensure the building is fully supported. In preparation for the colder months, the boilers have been turned on and tested, thank goodness, because my office is very cold, and our facilities team is making sure systems are ready for winter. On the grounds, the football field received a refresh thanks to a new order of turf paint and the great work of our team in maintaining the field. Every improvement, big or small, reflects our commitment to creating safe, welcoming spaces where students can learn, grow, and take pride in their schools. At the December 18th, 2024 School Committee Meeting, the Food Service Administrative Review was presented. The review identified a finding that the food service revolving account had accumulated net cash in excess of the allowable carryover amount, which is limited to the equivalent of three months of average expenditures. To adjust this, the corrective action plan calls for spending down a portion of these funds by reinvesting directly into the food service program through the purchase of new equipment. Investments included a new dish machine and grease interceptor at the primary school, a walk-in freezer and slicer at Turkey Hill Elementary, and a steamer along with milk coolers at the middle high school. These purchases will strengthen food service operations while ensuring compliance with state and federal requirements. We have several important staffing updates to share from our Special Services Department. First, I am pleased to welcome Catherine "Cat" Barry Grove as our new occupational therapist. Cat brings her expertise to support our students, and we are excited to have her join the district. At the same time, we extend our sincere thanks and best wishes to Maggie Popora on her retirement. Maggie has been a dedicated member of our team, and her contributions will be remembered with gratitude. I am also happy to announce that Amber Gothy will be stepping into the role of team chair for the primary school at Turkey Hill Elementary. Amber will transition into this position once her current role at Turkey Hill and the Achieve TLC program has been filled, ensuring continuity of services for our students, or her maternity leave, whichever comes first. Finally, I want to note an important compliance update from DESI. The department now requires that reevaluation and initial special education meetings be held on the 40th day without rescheduling for staff availability. In cases of conflict, parent or guardian excusal forms will be required. While this shift presents challenges for scheduling, particularly with coverage, our district is committed to meeting these timelines while continuing to support our staff and families. So, it's a much quicker turnaround time for meetings and the IEP paperwork to be sent out to families.
But it has to be exactly on day 40 or by day 40?
By day 40. It can be before day.
Okay, because yeah, I had seen that in one of the emails we got where it said on day 40, and I-
That's because the evaluation period is generally-
So, it has to be by day 40, but the state is not saying you have to count the calendar and it has to take place then or not?
No, they're not being that strict.
Okay.
It could happen on day 39.
That's, okay. That was my question. I was about to get real mad at the state.
My community engagement and communication. September was a really powerful reminder of the deep pride and energy that fuels our community. We started the year with collaboration as families shared their insights through the superintendent's entry survey, which yielded 186 valuable responses, and our students filled classrooms with learning. For example, at the high school, where students began the critical process of analyzing strong college essays before drafting their own. Outside the classroom, our athletic fields and auditoriums truly came alive with spirit and teamwork. The small but mighty high school band's vibrant halftime performances set the tone for Blue Knights' two definitive home wins against Gardner and Pittsburgh. Beyond the competitive fields, our sense of K-12 unity shone through with student participation and the primary school's annual DOT Day Assembly. On a personal note, attending our field hockey and football games this past Friday, one right after the other, underscored the incredible atmosphere surrounding our athletic events. They are a vibrant showcase of the Lunenburg spirit, a close-knit community that takes immense pride in its students and athletes. The start of the year certainly tested our resilience, such as with a rooftop fire on opening day, but in moments of challenges and in moments of joy and celebration, Lunenburg demonstrated the strength of our unity. I want to extend my sincere gratitude to the group of advisors who met with me last week to address challenges around budget issues. Your wise counsel was deeply appreciated and necessary. The meeting truly embodied our value of lifting each other up, and I look forward to our continued vital collaboration. I also had the benefit of meaningful professional development through the Massachusetts Superintendent Support Network. This group is designed for more experienced superintendents to work collaboratively to problem-solve with colleagues from across the state. This type of ongoing professional connection is crucial for effective leadership. Finally, I have applied for an extraordinary professional opportunity to join a national cohort of superintendents in a five-month program focused on effective communication and building trust with the broader community. The program is fully funded through philanthropy and would be at zero cost to the district. I expect to hear about my acceptance into the cohort before our next meeting, and I will be sure to share that update with you. That concludes my superintendent's report.
One note, I think the Boutwell talk is available on YouTube.
Oh, excellent.
Popped up in my recommendations. I haven't watched it yet.
All right. I want to go back. I did have one thing to report as part of the chair's report, two things, very quickly, if that's okay. We, Dr. Fortuna, myself, and Chris had a meeting, had two separate meetings with staff regarding the budget surplus. We've concluded those meetings. They were really positive experiences. Staff were very committed, and they had really good ideas about how to move forward. And as I said in the one with the high school teachers, we are going to have to borrow their credibility for a while because our math means that we don't have any. The other thing that I wanted to report was I was invited as the chair of the school committee to speak to Mr. Stevenson's government class, civics class, and they were really great. I do have to say that the children asked really good questions, including one young man who asked me, "So, how many teachers did we lose because of the budget screw-up?" That was his first question. I had not finished talking about it. It just, out of the gate, punch in the gut, was a great question. It was also a great reminder that like, the kids do care, right? And so, I really am grateful that Mr. Stevens invited me, and I was glad to be able to participate. We fixed the certificate in the elevator, was one of the questions. So, that's all done, and I thought that the kids are definitely engaged, and they're watching. They're watching and paying attention to what we're doing, so, thank you. All right, let's go to new business. So, the first thing on new business is additional primary paraprofessional position.
So, we have had a student move into the primary school who is a student that likes to bolt from the school, and currently Principal Squire and Assistant Principal Smith and Vian are really working. They're dividing the day up into thirds, but that is taking them away from their other duties as, to be able to monitor and help this student learn and grow. So, the primary school, Mrs. Squire included a letter in your packet, is asking for the support of a paraprofessional to supervise this student and help her integrate into the academic day.
I will say, that was one of my concerns during budget season with cutting the paras down so much was our ability to be flexible because that, we cannot always predict what's going to happen. They're kids, they grow, they change, people move in, people move out. So, yeah, this, it's a very sensical request, and this was one of my concerns with the cuts to the para. Can we afford it?
We can afford it because of the difference in that retirement. I'm about to ask you for another paraprofessional at Turkey Hill for the same reason. Juliana let me know yesterday that we have a move-in that is at Turkey Hill, the same type of behavior, as our younger student is exhibiting and also needs a para to be able to fully integrate into the school community. As you know, cutting the paras at Turkey Hill left too, and it's just not sufficient for the 11 students that are in the room and for us to be able to do inclusion with the students. So, that funding, Chris, remind me where that's coming from.
So, that would be salary reserve and paraprofessional?
Salary reserve and paraprofessional.
So-
Do you have a touch yet? Do you have a touch of salary reserve or anything?
Dr. Fortuna, can I ask you a question?
You may.
Okay. One of the benefits of the idea, like, can you explain the benefits of an inclusion classroom for both groups of students and why it's important for us to have inclusion classrooms?
Absolutely. This is one of my favorite topics, and Emily, you can pipe in too as a special educator. It actually is good for both sets of students to really learn tolerance and acceptance of differences, and they really, the students really learn from each other in these classrooms. I'm a teacher because of an inclusion classroom. It really can shape lives happening early. However, students, when they are included in a larger classroom, and our class sizes at Turkey Hill are getting quite large, when they are included in larger classrooms, they need extra support, and the teacher needs extra support, which is why we're asking for the extra paraprofessional hands.
Inclusion works when we fund it and give the support necessary, and then it's better for everyone, so.
Emily, do you think this is a good idea?
Yes.
Okay.
Also, just to add, if we weren't to add the support that the student needs, we're looking at possibly having to place them out of district, which is going to cost the district even more money. So, if the student that needs support isn't going to get the support, they're going to continue the behaviors that are unsafe and putting them at risk.
So, it will save us money in the long run, and it will be better for both the student that needs the para and the other students in the classroom.
That's my perspective, yes.
Okay.
I'd agree with that. How soon would we, would this happen?
I, because this was a school committee cut, I'd like school committee approval to move forward with this. It will happen as soon as you approve it, and we have the postings ready to go for both decisions.
Motion.
I have one more question.
Go for it.
In Principal Squire's request, it had said that this student may or may not end up fully needing a para based on the IEP and evaluation process. Would this position be something that just stays anyways if it's deemed not necessarily one-on-one for that particular student?
If it's deemed not necessary for that particular student, I believe the para would be assigned to kindergarten, where our class sizes are at 23 without a para.
Can, can, I have only recently learned this phrase, but can one of you, Emily, Dr. Fortuna, what's the difference between a one-on-one para and a other para?
So, one-on-one means basically the para is only assigned to that one student all day long for what they need, and then other paras that are just support in the regular ed classroom or an inclusion classroom can help multiple students.
So, if the student is deemed not to need the one-on-one para, they would still be able to provide useful support?
Yeah.
Okay.
For example, Mr. Scallan-Breney, we currently have a student that is working on a behavior schedule, so five minutes of work and then a five-minute break, five minutes of work and a five-minute break. We're hoping to elongate that time for this particular student, but having somebody that can monitor that behavioral program and be able to extend that time and supervise that time is important.
Okay. All right. Do we have any other questions? Do we have a motion?
A motion to add a paraprofessional position at the primary school to fill the staffing needs that-
Do you want both or one?
Yeah. Oh, you want both for this time around? Okay. Motion, we can afford this?
Yes.
Okay. Motion to add two paraprofessional positions as where they're needed. Thank you.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Yes.
All right.
All right, I'm asking you for one more thing. This was another cut that had happened last year. We went to a part-time computer tech and then an on-call computer tech, and we've worked with that model through the summer and through the first month of school, and it's just not working. Our services are a mishmash of the consultant, our part-time person, our on-call person, and Jordan. And what's been happening is if the hours don't match up, the high school students and middle school students especially aren't getting support. So, what this would allow us to do is have coverage at the high school for the full school day if we reinstated the full-time position or even increased hours to 30 or 32 hours per week. Jordan was telling me a story about how a student couldn't get his quiz to load because we're so text-dependent, I mean, computer-dependent in high school, couldn't get his text load test, and there was nobody there that could help him, and Jordan was in a meeting and couldn't immediately go over. And by the time he got there anyway, the period would have been over for the student. So, it's really about our efficiency to be able to offer students what they need.
Do we have a cost for this? Because they would, it would become a benefited position?
It would become a benefited position if the person chose to take benefits, and the money for this would come completely from salary reserve.
Okay. So, I guess the first question is, Chris, can we afford that? Sure.
It's going to be my, our favorite question. Write it on a piece of paper, hold it up. Hold the sign up.
So, yeah, we can afford it. Between the salary reserve line, which we haven't touched, and being almost three months into the fiscal year, I figured it will cost us between $38,000 to $45,000 for the rest of the remaining of the fiscal year, depending on what the person comes in at for a hiring rate. And also, I think there will be a little bit of excess in the salaries line for the administrative technology line for staff. We're only at about 20% spent on that through quarter one, so there might be about $10,000 to $20,000 remaining in that account at the end of the fiscal year.
All right.
Could you, just being new to budgeting-
Yeah.
Could you just touch briefly on the salary reserve line item? Is this for, my understanding of that, is that something, why do we put that money in there generally? For these situations?
For these situations, for extra hiring-
Okay.
Staff turnover.
Yeah, like union contract negotiations. That's where I think of it as, but-
Yep. It can only be used for salaries. It can't be transferred to other-
Okay.
-expense accounts.
If somebody leaves and we hire them.
Yeah. So, it's a hiring account, even though these are-
Yeah. So, we budgeted almost $90,000 in the salary reserve for this fiscal year.
Yep.
Last year was about $350,000, so it's quite a bit less, but there is money in there to be-
Yeah. I think the $350,000, my understanding, was because we were in negotiations, I think some, so. But we aren't, but we're pretty solid on all of our contracts now, so.
I'm skipping ahead because I have a question.
Except who?
Custodians.
Custodians. Okay, that's good to know. Thank you.
On the FY26 first-quarter budget report, is the, it cuts off, the Munis report, which this is amazing, it cuts off school salary R, is that the reserve account?
Yeah, it's the first line on the report.
Okay. And is this the total appropriation, or you just divided it by four to get?
So, that was a total appropriation for the year.
Okay. Does this figure, the $90,000, does that, did you preemptively take out?
No.
Okay. That's the first quarter, right? That's one. But this is what we have for the whole year?
Yeah, that's what we have for the entire year for. So, for the entire fiscal year, the available budget is $90,769.62.
Okay. And then we just hired, the Turkey Hill para will partially come out of that.
And this person will be funded?
Between, we can always reclassify between the two accounts, but most of it's going to come out of the salary reserve to start.
I thought the salary reserve was hires. So, there is an existing position, but it's half?
Yes.
True.
And this would mean moving from half-time to full-time or adding a whole full-time position on?
No, it would be moving from half-time to full-time.
Would that require posting it and hiring a new person?
No.
Because I believe right now we have two quarter time?
We, yes, we have Walter and Chloe, and Walter is almost part-time, a little bit less, and Chloe is on-call for eight hours a week.
Okay. Would the position be split between the two of them or would it be?
No, our hope would be that Walter accepts the additional hours.
Okay. And you're comfortable with where the salary reserve will be?
Yes.
Anybody else have any questions? All right. Laura, you think it's a good idea?
I think adding IT is always a good idea because we, we have a very small IT department for a school this size and the amount of technology. Think about how many kids are at the middle high school and how many laptops Jordan set up this-
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I saw the warrant go by, there's a lot of purchases.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's, it's a lot of work. I do not understand how Jordan does it.
Yeah. I think Jordan is punching above his weight in terms of how good he is for us.
So, I, yeah.
So, I'll make a motion to approve this request-
All right.
Of a potential hire for the IT department?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Yes.
All right.
Do you see a lot more staffing additions coming? I know, I'm not going to complain because you're new and you are adding what you see the needs. Do you see more coming, a lot more coming down the line?
No, because I don't think we can afford a lot more. I think what we're doing is patching holes, the two paras. Emily was exactly right. It's most likely going to save us some added district costs, and this technology position, I don't think the workload is sustainable for the person that's in it. Now, would I love to replace everyone that we let go? Yes, I just don't think the budget is sustainable.
Oh, no, I just meant, yeah, because I see you filling the holes as you see the needs as they arise, and that's totally understandable and I think expected. Okay.
Thank you.
Fall athletic report.
Is Shanina online?
I am. Just ran in from a game that we're having right now. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me today. I'm just going to give you a quick update on the athletics for fall. This is from September 23rd. Obviously, there's been some updates since then. We've come off to a strong start. We've had some about similar engagement in participation numbers as we did last year for a total of about like 167 to 169 students at the high school level and about 87 to 89 students at the middle school level. We are still open to having some more unified basketball participants, so that is, that registration is still open, so that will change a little bit. The two big programs that are doing, oh, three big programs that are doing fantastic right now are girls soccer, they're undefeated. Field hockey is undefeated right now, and as well as golf is doing very well. They're not undefeated, but they're doing very well. Football is doing fantastic. Cross-country is doing amazing too. You know, we had a drop in numbers due to the athletic fees, but we're slowly recouping, but so far, so good. Kids are enjoying it, fans are enjoying it. We're, you know, trying to get the vibe back up, you know, to the start of the school year, so everything's going great. Do you have any questions for me?
I do. How is the girls' field hockey team doing tonight?
It's, as I came in, it was 0-0. Tonight is, they are doing Hope for Hattie. She's a first grader that attends Lunenburg Public Schools. She was diagnosed with DIPG, which is a rare brain tumor, so they're doing a raffle, and they're doing a lot for her tonight, so it's nice to see that crowd there today, and the girls are all wearing their Hope for Hattie shirts.
Oh, that's so great.
Yeah.
Well, good luck to them.
Yeah, and thank you so much for taking on this role. I know this, you know, you are doing two jobs right now, so thank you, you know, thank you for doing this for us. No, no problem. I enjoy being around, you know, in this aspect of the work, you know, seeing students in a different light than just being as like an assistant principal and having to be kind of like the disciplinary, but now I'm more of like the athletic side, so it's nice to see kids that have never approached me before, but I'm having a, I'm having a good time.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for this numbers report, for the-
Yes.
-participation. This is fantastic and very helpful and really well-done. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you.
Any, any further questions for Ms. Burns?
Cross-country participation went way up. Not way up, but 10.
Because cross-country is awesome, Laura.
Yeah.
I, I will say that the cross-country team is always like a really tight-knit group of kids, and so, the fact that it's gone up after a huge swath of people left is a good sign. The, I think that they, they travel and do, you know, events that build like good team rapport, and I also think that Karma Tussigna is a special person, and the kids are absolutely lucky to have her.
They are indeed.
All right. Anybody have any other questions?
Oh, was this a different version than I looked at? Originally, the participation by year, you had percentages.
Yeah, so when I went back in and I looked at it briefly, I wanted to make sure everything was ready for tonight. I saw that I had missed completely the 2025 for boys soccer, so it kind of shifted a little bit, and I didn't have the time to put it into percentages, but those are the active numbers as of today.
Okay, that's, because I was going to comment on the high percentage of students that we have that participate in a, in a sport. It's, it's impressive and it's nice.
Yeah.
I would look for a motion to accept the fall athletics report.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. You guys have a good night. Got to get out there. Thank you, you guys have a good night, gotta get out there.
Good night, Shanina.
Chris, I think this is yours. The twenty, FY twenty-six quarterly report, budget, personnel, and Keystone.
We don't have Keystone.
Oh, we don't have Keystone Collaborative, okay, that's fine. So it's just budget and personnel? Great, Chris, take it away.
Hold on one second. So I'll go over FY twenty-five, just some points for the fiscal year through quarter one. Last year, we had only expended two million, nine hundred and ninety thousand, thirty dollars through quarter one. Incumbrances were three million, one hundred and seven thousand, one hundred and eighty-three dollars. And the available budget remaining was one eighteen million, seven hundred and fifty-five thousand, four hundred and seventy-six dollars, with a percentage used was twenty-four point five. I can say for FY twenty-six, we're on track better. We're about a percentage and a half, or one point two percent ahead of where we were last year. So year-to-date expended for FY twenty-six so far, three million, six hundred and fifty-three thousand, two hundred and nine dollars. Incumbrances are three million, eighty-nine thousand, five hundred and ninety-eight dollars, and an available budget of nineteen million, five hundred and forty-four thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars, and a percent used of twenty-five point seven. So we're on track to spend out all the money for the year, it looks like right now, and we're ahead of where we were last year. Last year, we were probably about a half percent to a percent too low of where we should have been expending for the quarter. And those are just some bullet points for FY twenty-five and twenty-six so far.
This Munis report? Thank you.
It's well gritty.
I think, does Munis just, I think Munis just makes?
Yeah, the only thing I don't like about the report is it cuts off the name.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, the line item.
The line item name, it is possible to get the full name, but then the report looks a lot worse, honestly.
Eventually, we'll just learn the account number, uh, numbers from looking at it so often. I really appreciate this. This is, I so appreciate the encumbered, the, the encumbered column. And I just, I think that's very useful to know what we've.
So the unaccountant in me, give me the, what that column means. I don't mean to sound like an idiot, but.
So any money that's gonna be expended during the fiscal year that hasn't been
So like someone's salary?
Correct.
Which is already, we already are gonna spend it.
Expended in POs that have been
Someone's gotta ask these questions, right?
And then if, yeah, if there's a purchase order,
If there's a purchase order.
we know we're gonna buy something, but we haven't been paid for it yet.
Makes total sense, I just wanted to make sure I understood what I was looking at.
It's, it's, this is how you're supposed to do it.
Yeah, and so the other question I had is, we actually talked about this at tri board last night. So when I'm looking at these reports, these are budgets. Does this include any grant funding or revolving accounts, or this is just what we've budgeted?
This is just for the general fund.
Just general fund budgeting, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
But wait.
But wait, okay.
Better.
Okay.
Chris, can I ask you like a generalized question?
Yeah.
One of the concerns that the interim town manager raised last, two summers ago, was about the complexity of the town's chart of accounts.
Okay.
Given your experience in the accounting field,
Yeah.
how do you think our chart of accounts for the district is doing in terms of its complexity, ease of management, and understandability? Because I think that like fundamentally, if we don't have a good chart of accounts, it's hard to move through the system effectively.
So the chart of accounts matches up with what DESI requires.
Okay.
So that's kind of, we're kind of stuck with
Yep.
stuck with that. But the, the ease and use of Munis is a lot better than a lot of the other accounting systems I've used to just spit out reports. Like this report, these two reports only take five minutes to pull.
Okay, but like in terms of like you moving through this, like one of the things that Carter Tetrazini had identified was that we had, you know, created new accounts for vendors that were just supplying the same thing. And so it looked like we had hundreds and hundreds of different line items for, you know, like the toilet paper as like an example or something. We're not doing that.
No, we're not.
Our chart of accounts is created and essentially mirrors what DESI requirements are.
Correct, and it matches what the end-of-the-year report for DESI requires as well.
And so it's not something that it would be, I mean, it is big, because it's
It's very large.
But it's not something that's unnecessarily large.
It's not unmanageable, no.
Okay, and you feel like Munis is a good system for us to be using?
It is probably, I would say, the Cadillac of systems for municipalities. I would say in Massachusetts, the majority of municipalities use Munis, or either Munis or another system called Infinite Visions.
Yeah.
But Munis is probably the Cadillac of municipal accounting.
Okay. The next question is totally different than like the systemic health kind of things. When you are budgeting us out and you say, you know, we're one point two percent ahead, do you mean that we are spending more of the money, or we are saving more of the money? Like what, what is your metric that you're ahead of what, is what I'm asking?
So we're ahead of what we were last year. So last year, we left between, I don't remember the exact figure, but it was between five-fifty and six-fifty in surplus. So we're ahead of what we were last year in spending. Our original appropriations are obviously a little bit bigger than what last year's was. So I believe that we are on track to spend out all the money.
All the money?
Most of the money.
But, so we'll have no surplus whatsoever?
No, that'll
I'm not gonna say down to the penny, no, but we're on track to spend out most of the funds that were appropriated.
Okay, and last question, it sort of ties the two things together. In your opinion, what is an appropriate surplus for us to have as we approach the end of the year? And I know, Dr. Fortuna, you had given us an idea of what happened in your previous district, and how we had consistently had bigger surpluses than you'd feel comfortable with. So what do you think, having looked at this more,
Yeah.
and listened to what Dr. Fortuna said, what do you think our likely surplus will be this year? And what would you want it to be going forward?
So I can say going forward, I would like it to be nothing, but I think that's unrealistic as well. So I think for the size of this budget, if you get under I'd say fifty thousand, it would be, that would be reasonable. Just because you need money towards the end of the year if you have any emergencies. So you want that buffer there as well. So if there is an out-of-district placement that you might have that's coming up, or if there's a boiler that breaks, you wanna have, you wanna have the funds available to pay for that in that fiscal year.
Funny you mention that. I prompted, you've probably asked one last question. One of the warrant items that we're gonna propose and vote on in a minute has to do with a special stabilizing account for out-of-district placements. If our budget surplus is fifty thousand dollars,
Yeah.
and a child moves in in February, which is after the close date for the lookback on the circuit breaker money. Let's say that the child moves in and we only have that fifty thousand dollar surplus. There's no placements, no out-of-district placements that are only fifty thousand dollars.
No.
So what do we do?
There's money in the special ed, sorry, you answer.
There would be money in the special ed circuit breaker that you would have to
Okay.
go into, but I think that would be a last resort as well, because you kind of wanna build that up over time. That's one of my goals, is to build up the, the school choice and the special ed circuit breaker over time as we move forward.
I, I know, but
So do you think it's a good idea to have this special stabilizing account set up?
Yes.
Okay. All right, anybody have other questions now that Laura and I have peppered him with questions?
I really appreciate this.
No, thank you so much.
Yeah, and there's also another report I can pull too for you guys, for meetings going in the future, that's just totals only. So if you don't wanna look through all eighteen or twenty pages and to see each individual line item, you can see that as well.
I like each individual
Okay.
line item, but it might be helpful to see it all.
The breakout?
Yeah, but I, I very much appreciate the detail in this.
Yeah, I do think it's interesting, just to see the percentages and stuff is really helpful to me, to get a better grasp on our spending.
I know this is not typically what we do, but we have two members of FinCom and Select Board. And so if they have questions, would you be willing to answer them? I mean, they're
Yeah.
they're both coming here on a day where they don't have to.
Yeah.
They're volunteering, over and above their volunteering.
They just really like, oh, fun.
Do I, Ms. Lockwood, Ms. Eppke, do you have, either of you have any questions for Chris?
About this particularly?
Yes.
No, I have a question about something else.
All right, go ahead.
Come up to the mic.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, come on up.
If you're wondering it.
Come on down.
You know.
Can I use this microphone?
Yeah. You can sit here, I'll move. No, it's fine.
Renee Eppke, Sixth Iris Court, just speaking as myself. I had a question going back to the positions you guys talked about. When you say you can afford them, are you factoring in, I know you don't know if they'll take health insurance, because these are benefited positions, are you, are you
Factoring.
factoring that in, you know, worst-case scenario that they will, so when you say they, that you can afford it, you're factoring in
The health insurance and other
fully benefited, okay. Okay, that was my only question.
That is the, that is the benefit of carrying the health insurance in our lines. Is that, we, you
Yeah.
Yeah.
Down, down.
Good, how are you?
So last meeting, we added another position that went from part-time to full-time.
Correct.
And now we're using, we are making a full-time, see, I was listening my way over here. We're making a full-time position on the IT, we are hiring a new prior professional. And one prior professional is retiring, so the salary should be close to a washout.
Yeah.
What is the total financial impact of these three hires that will have an impact on the salary reserve line?
Oops, sorry.
No, that's okay, you're good.
So I believe the para is gonna cost between twenty-six and twenty-seven thousand for their salary. And then for, depending on what they hire the IT person at, that's gonna be between, I'm projecting thirty-eight and forty thousand dollars, because we're already three months into the fiscal year.
Okay.
And I think on the twenty-six thousand for the para, that's on the high end too, because we're three months into the fiscal year. So it's gonna be between probably fifty-five to sixty thousand.
For those three positions?
For the three positions.
Is that including health insurance?
No.
So that was gonna be
Yes.
So, so as a matter of practice,
Yeah.
when you're hiring someone, how are you estimating, so you know you have enough money,
Yeah.
the, the benefit, which is most, the benefits, which is mostly the health insurance?
Yeah.
How is gonna be your practice on budgeting for that?
So I'm looking at what we've expended currently through the year and
For health insurance?
for health insurance.
Okay.
And what it would cost for them monthly to have them on the city's insurance. I can tell you right now that we're not at twenty-five percent through, for the health insurance through quarter one.
Okay, what percentage are we?
We are at
What line is that?
I'll tell you in one second.
Just what account number, and I'll look for it.
It is it's fifty-two hundred, so we're only at twenty-four point seven percent right now. So we're a little under twenty-five percent.
Right.
So we're right on a ball, about at the ballpark to spend out that line item, but we're a little bit under too, I believe. So those, when I factored in the health insurance for the two, I saw what we had expended currently, which is about nine hundred and fifteen thousand, and we had appropriated about three point seven million for
What would be three, you have, you're hiring three positions that might be taking health insurance?
Correct.
Last, last, last meeting, and two new this, this meeting.
Correct.
So.
So I think where we're at, we're, we're very comfortable, I think, for the health insurance.
So it's a final request, like that, that question is always gonna be in my mind whenever you guys talk. If, whenever we talk about, you know, expenditures, new expenditures, they're not in the budget. If we could, whenever we are talking about it, if we could always have, what is the financial impact?
Yeah.
And, you know, where it's coming from?
Yeah.
And especially with staff, you know, like, the health insurance is one that can, it's tricky to budget.
Yeah.
But, yeah, no, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome, and also for the IT person, I, I'm not sure if you were here, but we do have a little excess in the salary line item for administrative technology, probably between ten and twenty thousand.
Okay.
So that's between Jordan's salary, Walter and Chloe right now, so there is some excess in that line.
Okay, that's great, all right, thank you.
Can I add to that, actually, I think it would be interesting, like in private budgeting, people use a fringe number. It would be interesting
Fringe benefits?
Yeah, to me, no, like, right, a, a tax and fringe benefit number that is, is how we would budget when I worked in nonprofits, right? So in the person you hired, let's say they made fifty thousand dollars, the fringe could be ten percent, or, you know, whatever it is. I don't know if, if that's a way we could talk about it, or is that not
That's possible.
relevant?
I think the term fringe benefits
Yeah.
sometimes is not related to health insurers.
Okay.
It can be other fringe
Well, right, so, but maybe we, I'm just trying to think of an easy way to have a conversation about it. Maybe we don't call it fringe, right, but like when you look at a salary, maybe
Benefits cost.
like the, what is the benefit's cost for each?
The benefit package, I think.
Right, for each.
Yeah.
For each position, just might be, like, to think about it as an actual number.
Right.
I think it's a little bit, when honestly, I don't mean to put words in your mouth.
Yeah, no, that, that's, that's what it is, like, my mind, I have this
It's hard to cut off as an exact
Yeah, no, I mean, I know if they're gonna take, but you could plan on, you know, generally, a person who takes a family plan costs
An estimate.
You know, Laura, it's hard and it's not at the same token, because when you look at the usage of the health insurance, it's like eighty-five percent of you know, like, there, there are numbers, there are, that is data there that you can use
Yeah.
to really understand. To, to put a, a solid number that when you're proposing, you know, a new person, what is the average? Because they will end up going in that pool, right, eventually, everybody will just be part of that group, so.
And one of the things that we can do is, once the positions are hired, is we can come back and let you know if, and they did in fact take benefits.
Yeah.
And by the way, I want everybody to take benefits, I think
Yeah.
health is a super important thing.
Yes.
I, it's not that, I, I'm just thinking of the financial impact and what that's
You know, it's important, it's a huge part of
On, on the budget, that's, that's all.
Yeah, because it's such a huge part of our budget, it's almost probably seven to eight percent of our budget.
Yeah, it is, yeah, so, anyway, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anna.
Thank you, Renee, thank you, Anna. Anybody have any questions for, any additional questions for Chris?
Thank you, Chris, keep up the good work.
We also used to get staffing reports, like resignations and hires quarterly, can we
Yeah, we can go back.
Go back to doing that, I just, it's nice to know, keep an eye on it, like if everyone in one department is resigning, that would be nice for us.
Yeah, that would be good to know.
Also, we had this, don't, it's not a donation, it's us a donation, and I don't know where that falls in the agenda.
Oh, it's, it should have come under donations.
Yeah, I was, I noticed that, and I'm like, it's, it's not us getting things, it's us donating things, so I don't know if we should go back.
Let's do this, let's do the vote to accept the quarterly budget report, and then we'll go back to that.
All right, motion to accept the quarterly budget report?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right.
Do you, does the committee wish to talk about the grants and revolving funds, which you also had in your folder today?
Yes, I had a question about that, actually.
Do we wanna do your other thing first?
Well, Chris is right there.
The, okay.
This is, this is fantastic.
So some of these have very little in it, some are negative?
Yeah, so, so the ones, so all, those are all the grants and revolving funds that I could find in Munis as of last Friday. And those are all the cash balances in Munis as of that date.
How did
The only one that I really The only one that I really wanna break out is the after-school activity fund, because it, it's a combination of the elementary school, the middle school, and the high school.
Oh, those should be separate, because they're run separately.
So, they're, it goes in one pot right now, it looks like. Um, but there is a way to break it out, because on each cash receipt, it says where it's coming from, so that's gonna take some time to get together. Um, so that's one thing I am working on right now.
And remind me, in municipal budgeting, these accounts, we can roll over that money? It's just the money that comes in the general fund we can't roll over?
Correct.
Okay.
What is?
So, it doesn't have to be spent by the end of the fiscal year, basically?
What is the SOA evidence-based LE?
That is the reading specialist position that grant, we fully expended last year, and we received new funding this year, that just hasn't posted yet.
Okay, that one is negative, don't like to see that.
Um, and the S R, so some of these, did you close them out?
Some are very old, so some are very old, I'm not sure if they've all been closed out yet, that's one thing I'm also looking into.
Mm-hmm. Um. In your copious time.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, these capital plan.
Yeah.
Line items, not for this moment, but just will be curious in the future, kind of what those are.
The FY twenty-five one, I think we're actively spending that, like, warrant's coming in now.
And if you wanna take a look at the detail, there is a workbook for each individual account.
Oh, yeah, down the bottom.
Um, on the bottom.
Oh!
So, everything's linked, so you can see the cash receipts broken out, any AP broken out.
There's so much excitement for a spreadsheet, Laura.
Hiring? You're welcome. No, this is amazing, I was gonna.
So, CRP stands for cash receipt, APP stands for AP or expense, um, and then there are some journal entries that are in there that I'm looking in at right now.
What is lost book?
That one, I'm not sure.
That one, actually, right now, is turning into lost computer, um, it's where those funds go into.
Okay. Um, we have names on that, are those student names?
They are probably student names that had to pay into it, we should look into that.
Okay, I'd like it if we could not have student.
Yeah.
Okay, so, I, I would, um, I'd like it if we could not have the parent names of students.
Hey, kids are klutz, kids are klutz, I don't know what to say.
These should not be on, uh, things that are, I mean, because everything you share with us is a public, becomes a public document, and I would like it if we did not have student names on there, so, uh, I'm kinda, since, I, I just think we shouldn't have student names on there, but, um, there's so much information here, you couldn't have seen that.
You're a hundred percent correct.
I was wondering if it was names, and now I know.
Can I ask that we, for a future item, we talk more about these, these funds a little bit, I think, we have a lot on our agenda tonight, but I think it would be of interest to me, just to go through some of this, sort of, you know, what, what might be available to us as, you know, as our budgets are leaner.
Did the finance director always have access to all this information, or did you create these reports and these?
Uh, I believe they did have access.
How is it we did not see them for?
It's, so when you go into Munis, into the account inquiry, you can download all the detail from Excel, into Excel, um, so I believe there was.
We repeatedly asked for the.
This is what.
Athletic revolving account, multiple times.
This is what we have asked for, for two years, I am so thrilled to see this, and this is, I just love that it goes down to the warrants and the purchases, I.
You should be an accountant in your next life.
I don't like math. This is fantastic.
No, no, I'm, I'm just giving you a hard time.
This is, this is what we were asking for.
Yeah, yeah. All right, let's, let's, uh, do we wanna accept the report on the revolving account and grant funds?
So moved.
Second.
But, uh, with the caveat that maybe we, um.
Yeah.
Get rid of student names on there.
Take out.
I can do that.
I'm also worried about the circuit breaker one, because I know the circuit breaker purchases usually have the names of students on them, so I wanna make sure that those, there is not the names of students utilized.
I can take a look at that and they get them.
I just wanna make sure we are all a hundred percent clear, I don't care if my son's broken laptop is known to the public.
That's what I was laughing at.
I do not, under any circumstances.
I was looking at it, trying to decide everyone's last name.
Want to identify anyone on the circuit breaker, that is, we gotta be a hundred percent double, triple check, we cannot have that go out, it is absolutely protected information by federal statute.
Yeah.
It would not be helpful.
I don't think it is on here, FY.
Okay.
I'm gonna go through it.
I just wanna make sure that is the one that, like I said, my son has Captain Butterfingers, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, but other parents might.
The circuit breaker one is different.
Like, if my kid's breaking laptops every week, I'd rather we just not announce that publicly.
Oh, shame him.
All right, uh, we'll accept the.
The addendum.
The addendum to the motion, do you, do you wanna second it again, Mandy?
Oh, second, sure.
Okay, and then, uh, do we have a vote, all in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye, all right, let's keep going.
Back to donations.
Back to donations.
So, as the committee knows, we adopted, um, Harcourt Mifflin Holton, I think is who they are now, version three of the HMH reading program, um, this year, we still have a surplus of HMH two materials that are not useful for us, but may be useful for other districts, and we're looking for the school committee's permission to donate, offer to donate those to other districts that may still be using HMH two.
What form do the curriculum materials take, are these CDs, or books, or like an online subscription?
Some of them are books right now.
Work, like physical work.
Yeah, these are physical work.
Shh. Is there a school that we know wants it?
Um, no, we're going to look into that, we wanted your permission prior to putting feelers out.
Excellent, I make a motion to accept your request to donate, second.
All right, all in favor?
Yes.
All right, all right, let's go down to facility fee document update.
All right, so, you, um, were, and we implemented new facility rates on July first, and we would like to revise some of those, um, today, and most notably, actually, the only one we want to revise is our AV support, what we've noticed has, we wanna make at least one hour of AV support mandatory for people, and we want to increase the salary to actually what it's costing us, and the reason we wanna do that is what's happening is some groups are using our auditorium and our AV equipment and saying to Jordan, oh, you can just do that on the Friday before the Saturday event during his work hours for us, so, we don't want that practice to continue.
When you.
So, we're asking for one, um, mandatory hour.
When you say mandatory, meaning if they're going to use.
If they're going to.
Certain, can you, this is a dumb question, can you use AV support without using any of the facilities, or this is an add-on, or if you're gonna use the auditorium, you have to have AV support?
No, it's an add-on.
I think that, that makes sense.
Okay, so.
So, if you don't need the AV at all.
Right.
We're not trying to make a profit, we also don't wanna bear the cost of outside.
Do we bill in hour increments?
How do we bill, Liz, in hour increments?
Okay.
All right, oh, proposed per hour.
Yeah.
Sorry, it's on the.
But you can't just hire AV support, like, without.
Right.
All right.
You can't check off that you want AV support without paying for at least an hour.
Rent Jordan for like a DJ. Okay.
I make a motion to accept the increase in the AV support line.
There's also an increase in the custodial line.
Oh, okay.
Due to increase in wages.
Oh, where was that one?
It's, um, right above AV support.
Oh, yeah.
It's going, it's currently thirty-six.
Oh, my gosh.
I wanna raise it to thirty-nine.
Oh, I miss these, okay.
Okay.
Um, and that is to reflect current wages, which is what it's costing us?
Uh.
So, when it says thirty-dollar student, that's thirty dollars if we use a student E.
Correct, it's, so, for example.
Do we have an AV club that?
And we don't right now, but, for example, last year, Walter was a student, he was a senior in high school.
Oh, okay.
And he was doing the majority of the setup work.
Do we have students that do that now?
We don't have a student right now, we're trying to get one.
Yeah, no, that's a very, they're cheap and it's nice training.
Yeah. Walter's trying to recruit.
Do we have a, a second on Mandy's?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Yes.
Aye, all right, excellent, let's move on to the facilities and grounds report, Mr. Stevens, I believe that is you, Mr. Stevens, come on down, you're the next contestant on the prize list, right?
It's nice to see you, I feel like we haven't seen you.
I know, I was supposed to be at the last meeting, but I had to go forward and.
No, it's okay, it's just, like, we don't get to see you as often.
Um, so, for the most part, for our capital projects during the summertime, basically everything, uh, has been finished up, the mini-split project is complete, um, they're gonna be giving me training on that, I believe next week, on how to work that for my computer. Um, the security upgrade, camera upgrade at primary was completed, um, the fire alarm upgrade is, uh, finally at a hundred percent, they came in this following weekend and finished up the demo, so that is done, there was a few things that we had issues with, that we made them, uh, come back and take care of while they were there. Um, also, there was security upgrade there as well, we are still waiting on the head unit to operate that for the, the card access and all that, um, it's mostly a manufacturing issue, it's, I think it's across seas and it's taking forever to get here, um, so they say as soon as it's in their hand, they're coming over and installing it, and then get us back up and rocking and rolling, so it's basically, we're running off the old system for the most part right now, so it's business as usual, um, but the cameras and everything are all up and running.
So, are the key cards working, or?
The key cards, I, I don't think they are right now, because she's having to let everybody, yeah, I know, it's a real pain, nobody's, nobody's liking this right now, so, we've been breathing down their throats, and they're like, we're doing what we can, um, so, it's, it's kind of at both of our hands. Um, the door upgrade over there at Turkey Hill was completed, uh, the two double sets of doors in the front, one in the gym, and the double set going out towards the dumpsters, where, hold on, they've got, um, new card access for the dumpster side as well, um, so, but we're still waiting for that unit, so that will be up and running as well, um, but other than that, doors work great, it's a beautiful thing, so I know what it's.
Alicia's happy, and I saw you put up.
She's gonna be a lot happier when that head unit comes in, she doesn't have to buzz everybody in.
Yeah.
I saw you put up the awnings.
Yes, the awnings put up, yes, because of ACE program, we might, thought they might be having to come in that way or whatnot, and for, uh, central office as well, it's a little bit of a walk, um, we're also gonna look into perhaps getting some lighting over there, because if you guys are working kind of late, um, I had a quote in that, wanna get another one or two and just see where that's at, um, that's coming down the pipeline here soon. Um, we had a new truck delivered, um, I think it was April, May this year, um, it did not have a plow with it, so we are getting a, of a plow outfitted on that truck, because right now, we basically have two new trucks, and we got two old ones that are on the way out, so, basically, anything can happen with the old two, um, we're gonna get the newer dump truck, we have an old dump truck, a new dump truck, we're getting the new one outfitted with wiring for the sander, in case that truck goes down, so, right now, we're just trying to use that one until there's nothing left of it, so, there's no, no need in making the new truck all rusty with salt prematurely, you know, um, also, we got, uh, reiterating what Jody had said about, we got all the new dishwasher, I helped Nadine facilitate all that, get that new drying run, the dishwasher machine, the grease trap done, get all the, um, the steamers and the milk things going, um, I think later down the line, I think she wants to get the serving line done at Turkey Hill as well, because that's old and it's had it, and upgrade that, um, so as far as that going, we are in pretty good shape, um, just the best we can be for now, you never know what's gonna happen, you know, anything can change by the minute, you know, so, um, we had two full-time positions open for the high school and one part-time, but I think after, um, this coming, we, for the most part, we got most of them filled, so we're just waiting for paperwork to go through, fingerprinting.
Great.
And most of that, and we will be basically at a hundred percent over there.
Whoa.
Um, as much as best we can, because we've been running a skeleton crew over there for the last couple of weeks, um, we've got two, uh, new hires, um, I mean, they've been around for two months or so, three months now, not even, uh, we've got Scott Hoglen over at, uh, Turkey Hill, he's been fantastic, I hear very good things, and the same with Daniel Johnson over at primary, and I'm over there as well, and I see him all the time, and he's doing great work, so, um, that's.
And these were existing positions in the budget?
Yes, yes.
Okay, can I just ask a general question about, so, when we look back on the FY twenty-five budget, when I looked at the line items that we had not, the school had not spent to, um, budgeted, a lot of it had to do with buildings and facility maintenance, and I know that was pre, a lot pre you, and, you know, we, we had, we were down positions and that kind of stuff, I just wanted to see if you feel as though whatever we've budgeted for this year, we have the staffing to sort of, you know, complete those projects, you know, and, that, that, that area, right, of, um, what we oversee, you know, that we're, we're thinking about that strategically, just because that was an area last year, I think we didn't, where a lot of them, correct me if I'm wrong, but, right, a lot of the, the funding issues actually came out of those line items, um.
I think we're doing, uh, pretty good.
Okay.
We've, like I said, we've, we're, uh, we're gonna be pretty fully staffed over at high school, and that was always kind of our Achilles' heel over there, was keeping, keeping people over there, they'd leave all the time, so, um, things are looking pretty good from what I can see, um, morale is up, you know, so.
Yeah, it's easier when there's more people.
It's a good thing, you know, and that's half the battle right there, is keeping.
And you got a lot done this summer, this summer.
Yeah, absolutely.
My head's spinning still.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, but we dug in and got it done.
I mean, a lot of longstanding projects were completed.
No, that's great, I just want, I think it's something the school committee personally should be engaged on, just because that is an area where, you know, we, we fell a little flat the last few years, I think, and, and there was a host of reasons for that, um, but.
I mean, I'm the first one, if there's an issue, and we need help, I'm gonna be the first one that's gonna say it, you know, I'm not gonna hide in the corner.
Yeah, yeah, because we wanna, you know, obviously, we wanna do what we need to do to keep our kids safe and healthy in school, that's the most important.
As soon as I hear anything, I try to nip it in the bud as soon as possible, you know, so.
And keep those buildings in.
Yeah, and keep the buildings in good condition, because we wanna, we wanna use them.
You neglect them, it just comes back and it costs you even more later on.
Exactly.
It's a problem, you know.
Exactly, well, thank you so much, I know that was more of a general question.
Can I ask for one favor?
Sure.
Next time you come do a report, can we also get it in writing?
No.
Because I go back and search, no, I.
Not like when it's in writing. You did a great job.
No, I...
Keep it simple.
Because I go back and search.
No PowerPoints.
It doesn't have to be, I might ask them to do a PowerPoint, but we used to get just the quick report.
Yeah, just a document, I think.
And when I wonder where we are on things, I go back to the old reports. Plus, you know I don't do as well with verbal as with written.
Can I ask you a question, Mr. Stevens?
Sure.
How are you doing?
Doing all right.
You feel like it's a lot?
It's a lot. Most of, you know, I'm not a super-budget person either, so I'm a get-it-done person, you know? So, you know, I use these guys a lot. They help me out, you know? I mean, it keeps me busy and day goes by pretty quick, I'll tell you that.
Can we do anything more to support you?
If I need anything, I'll be the first one to ask you guys. That's it. But other than that, you know, I've been, everybody's helping me out fantastic, so I've got no complaints.
All right.
Thank you for the amount of stuff you got done this summer. I mean, that was just, the amount of projects going on. I know some of it was subcontractors, but the amount of things which had to be coordinated.
It was, yeah.
Turkey Hill was hilarious. Wires hanging everywhere.
That place was filleted this year.
Oh, and he moved everybody.
Yeah, he moved central office over. Yeah, that was...
Seems good to district offices.
Yeah, it was getting close to the end. I was questioning whether we were going to have it back together by school starting.
I went and visited that central office the other day and it worked great. The signage is really good and the door, I went and saw Liz, and, you know, it was easy to get in and stuff, so that was good. It's very clear where you guys are, which is a good thing.
Awnings, Lunenburg, it looks nice. And then, oh, I guess that's the door issue. Is that the part of the door issue?
No, our door works.
Was that one of the doors that was...
Yeah, theirs has a separate card access. Basically, the same one that was at Passios, we took that out and then had to integrate it over to there, so that it like, so central office is kind of separate, sort of.
Okay.
It takes a different card over there, but like it's like at Passios did, then Turkey Hill. But eventually, once we have this other head unit back in and installed, we should be able to upgrade. I'll be talking with Jordan on that. He kind of got the ball rolling on the central offices. We'll be able to hopefully get all that on one card, so there's one card for all three buildings, you know? You know, so people that need to be in all three buildings, their card will work in all three. You can turn ones off, turn them on for other buildings and just simplify it.
Is there an additional cost to that for us?
It would be most likely minimal. I don't think it would be that bad, but there will be a little bit. I think we may have to add, it's a technical thing. I really don't know that much about the IT kind of people know what the soundness end of things, but...
But it is feasible and we're...
I've got three cards to get into three different buildings, so it'll just get rid of one card. You get in everywhere, kind of just...
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it'll be good. The other, the high school and primary are all, I think, already set up with it, so it's basically just getting Turkey Hill on the same thing, so. And I believe we did that. I actually think, once we have that new head unit, that it will be all the same, except for central office.
Oh, so that's...
It's one, one door. One door in the whole district.
Two would be better than four.
Yeah. Well, thank you. I am, I'm going to make a motion to accept his report, FY26. What is it, the first quarter? Facilities and grounds report.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. The next thing we have on the agenda is authorization of warrant articles. So, there are two warrant articles that have been proposed.
I want to look, I want to talk about a third, too.
And what I'd like to do is take the one that I don't think will be controversial first, and then do the second one, so that we can give the second one time for discussion. Does anybody have an objection to that plan?
Nope.
Okay. So, the first one, it should be, I know you definitely received an email about...
I think it's just in our email.
Yeah. And so, this is, just a little bit of background. We had an informal discussion, working group, with various people in town last Thursday, and we had, finally had everybody in the same room to talk about whether or not it makes sense to do some kind of special stabilizing fund, not a stabilization fund, not a revolving account.
Why don't we call it a stabilization fund?
There's some legal requirement in municipal law that prevents us from doing that, according to the town manager. So, she wants to call it...
Other towns have called them stabilizing, okay.
She would like to call it a special fund or a stabilizing fund, but not a revolving account or a stabilization account.
Does she want to use reserve fund? That's what the state calls it.
Yeah, okay. I forgot what it was, but call it a reserve fund. So, here's how the proposal would work. If we had a budget surplus, we would remit that money to the town and it would be placed in this fund. And then, by a majority vote of both the select board and the school committee, we could use those funds to help offset the costs for out-of-district placement and transportation when the out-of-district costs, out-of-district placement costs are incurred after our ability to budget for them. And the hope is that while we wouldn't be able to necessarily offset it, like if something happened this year, that eventually, over time, we would be able to offset those costs. The other thing that this would do is it would create a mechanism to fund this without increasing the citizens' tax burden. In other words, this money is already being given to the school. It would be given back and instead of going to free cash, it would go into the stabilization fund.
Would it require of, because typically, unexpended funds go to free cash and then to expend those funds require a vote of town meeting?
That's why we're doing this, is a warrant article, because it would change how...
Okay.
Yep.
So, this, this means that to take unexpended funds, they would return to the, would they go back to free cash and then, but it would not require a vote of town meeting to...
No. Once the town meeting approves the reserve fund being set up like this, then it would just require a vote of us and a vote of select board.
To spend the money.
To spend the money, but not to move it?
No, no, the move, the money would go automatically. It wouldn't require anybody to do anything there. That part would be set up.
Once it was set up.
Happens automatically.
How would we, if we wanted to put more than the surplus in, I'm not saying we would, but if we wanted to...
That would require something.
How would we do that, or if we wanted to fund it the first year?
I think that would require either some kind of line item budget, or it would require some allocation from town meeting. But we don't need to...
I'm not asking to do that.
We don't need to, we don't need to worry about that yet, because we'd have to have the accounts set up first.
I wholeheartedly support this. I first heard about it last November at the MASC annual conference and I thought it was a fantastic idea. It doesn't, it helps when the price is all over the place. It helps to, it helps for the unexpected costs, but if every year our costs go up, it's less helpful.
So, my understanding is it's a one-year gap fix. So, basically, it's not about controlling the costs. My understanding, if you, is basically, the first year, you don't get the circuit breaker for the person. So, the person who's going to an out-of-district placement, let's say they cost $100,000, that first year...
I would love it if they cost $100,000.
Okay, I'm just using round numbers, Tony. So, right, can, wait, listen to this. So, if they cost $100,000 to send to an out-of-district year one, the state doesn't give you any money for that?
After a certain point.
If it's a certain part of the year.
Correct, because we could budget for it if they move in before the...
Right, so that, the problem is you haven't budgeted for it. So, this fund, we would be able to access to pay that one-time gap, right?
Yes, that's it.
And then the next year...
That's all it would do.
And then the next year...
We would get the trailing funding source from the town, or from the state.
We would get the trailing funding.
We don't get all of it back, but...
We get like 75%.
Right, so, but we'll be easier to budget for and we get 75% back.
Isn't that what we utilize circuit breaker for?
Circuit breaker is a trailing funding source, so it's, it doesn't come in...
We have a revolving account that has a balance right now.
Sure.
Yes, I do think we need, I...
The problem is that that is not sufficient. It would never be, I mean...
It's, so if we're only having about 50 grand, we're not a year, we're not, it's going to take...
My guess is that, that will be... I, right, like, the big issue is, this is something that is just a more efficient way to do something that we are already doing. And it costs no money. This should not be controversial.
So, my only question for you is, and we can talk about this, because I'm going to vote for it to go on the warrant, right? Is sort of, if we had a situation like this year, when we had $600,000 or whatever, and that all went into that fund, like, it's going to be an automatic into the fund, right? I think we want to just make sure, as is these accounts that we're looking at, like that the school committee is closely monitoring that extra money account, because, you know, what if in good times, we ended up with a big amount there, you know, and the only way we can spend it, right? Are we handicapping us?
But we wouldn't be handicapping us, because we control what we would remit to the town through our budgeting process, right? So, it would only ever be the excess that we couldn't use.
That we couldn't use.
Yeah, so it's never going to hurt us. It could only help us.
But once it's in that reserve, that's all we can use it.
Correct, that's true.
That's...
That's the only thing. But it's only going to get to the play, to the reserve after we've passed on using it for a full school year.
Right, so I guess I'm just speaking to future school committees that will be sitting up here, right? Because we wouldn't want to be in the situation where then, we had a million dollars going into this account and then we couldn't use it for anything but the special ed.
No.
And we should not be leaving...
The other thing, and this is...
It shouldn't be, but I just think I'm, you know...
This is the other thing to answer Laura's question about the circuit breaker revolving account. One of the problems that we had in the last two years was the circuit breaker amount, which we can generally count on being a certain amount, changed. And maybe, Emily, you can probably explain.
No, I'm just agreeing with you. I just remember from listening.
Yeah, and so, if we have...
Like, it was 70% one year, 90% this year, but it...
It switches. And so, if we have that revolving account and it switches in a way that's bad and we have somebody move in, it will not be enough. I mean, we've, since we've been, since you and I have been on here, we've had three of these, the cheapest of which would barely be covered by our revolving account and two of which would be not even half of the cost.
So, I'm going to vote yes on this.
Okay.
My concern is that it's making budgeting harder, because now there's going to be two accounts that will pay out-of-district placement costs. The circuit breaker revolving account and this special stabilization reserve, reserve stabilizing account. And I'm just concerned that we're adding another revolving account type to solve a problem.
Oh, I completely agree. The issue that we have is, the current revolving account would likely not be sufficient if we had two people move in.
No, it would not.
But are we using it now?
We'd be done.
We do, we... So, I guess I'm wondering Chris's opinion on this, if we're overly complicating things unnecessarily, or... Is there some other way you would...
Dr. Fortuna, you did this in Hudson, correct?
And so, you think this is a good thing?
Yes.
Yeah.
But one of the things is, there is a limit on how much money you can put into this account.
Okay.
You can only put in 2% of net school spending. Net school spending of what you actually spent that year, not the net school spending that the state identifies.
So, maybe the warrant needs to have more...
So, there is a limit.
Net school spending actuals?
Yes.
Not budgeted?
Not budgeted.
And it's how much, 2%?
2%.
That seems, I mean, I'd still like to be spending more than that, but, okay.
So, net school spending, if we spend, how much is our annual budget? 26?
26 million.
So, 26, 10%, I mean, 2% of that, so we really can't put that much in it?
No.
A year.
A year, but, you know...
Oh, per year?
Yes.
Okay, but it can go higher than that. Thank you. Okay, I make a motion that yes, we vote to put this on the warrant.
Before we do that, I just want to read for the record.
Okay.
It says, "To see if the town will accept the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 50, Section 13E, to establish a reserve fund to be utilized in the upcoming fiscal years to pay, without further appropriation," that's Laura's question, "for an unanticipated or unbudgeted cost of special education and recovery high school programs, out-of-district tuition or transportation." By the way, if you look at the transportation line for special education that we had from Chris's budget presentation, the special education transportation was more than 50% of the general education transportation. It is a serious cost. And until we have somebody that's bidding, we have no way of stopping them from raising the price.
So, we can use it on transportation? Is that different, what you just read, than the wording you sent us?
It is.
Okay.
That's the wording that the town manager put in.
I like that wording better.
Yeah, I do, too.
Thank you.
All right.
I thought I was going crazy. I'm trying to read along. Do you motion?
Yeah, I made a motion to vote that the school committee recommends this go on the warrant. Is that what?
Second?
I'm supposed to say?
Yep. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, excellent. That's good. Let's go to the more controversial one. Mandy?
Oh, please, don't call me controversial.
Go to the more, more inspiring one.
The more inspiring one. So, I'm, I would like us to offer a warrant as a school committee to mirror a warrant article that was on the town meeting warrant last year. As you may know, the school budget is always developed based on an estimate of Chapter 70 funding. This is based on a number the legislature announces, not the legislature. Usually, it's the governor's budget in January of each year. The school and the town are required to build our budgets based on those estimates. The town and school department are not given a final number until the state budget is signed into law. That almost always happens in July, so that's two months after our spring town meeting, where we have appropriated our funds already. This year, due to advocacy by many members of the select board, the school committee, the public, our state legislators, we're able to secure an additional $202,000 in a, 2,000, 202,185 dollars in education funding that was not budgeted to the schools during the school budgeting process. In order for the schools to get that money, it has to be a warrant on the upcoming November town meeting to go to its intended purpose. I completely understand that the school committee would need to come up with an actual budget of what we would want to spend this $202,000 on. I would not ask the public to vote for the school getting that funding without a idea of what we would spend it on, but I, in good conscience, can't ask. I asked many people, select board members, school committee members, members of our community to go to the legislature and ask for this money to help fill, you know, some budget gaps that we had and continue to have. And so, I just feel very strongly that I think we should put it on the warrant for a vote. I'm not ready to answer all questions about it, because I do think, you know, we need to work with Chris and Dr. Fortuna, of course, on what that money would be spent on. The caveat here is the deadline to get it on the warrant is tomorrow, so that's why I've brought it up today, without all the full information that I think is probably needed. So, I would ask my colleagues to vote in support of putting it on the warrant and, you know, then to have a further discussion about it in the next few weeks, about what, what the money would go for.
Are there any specific things it has to go for, or is that completely up to...
It would be completely up to us. I mean, some of the things I think we could desperately use pairs in our kindergarten classrooms.
It would not be up to us.
Well, they would vote.
Yeah, it would.
It would be up to the superintendent.
Right, but we would have to vote on it.
Correct.
On a supplemental budget?
Yes.
Yeah, right?
Yes.
Yeah, and hearing about the kindergarten classes.
Yeah, I mean, I, and, you know, my nephew's in a class in fourth grade with 28 kids in it, so, you know, I'm not saying that's what this money would go towards, but I just think we have a lot of needs and, you know, that's just my, that's my pitch, so.
There's definitely things it can go towards.
What?
There's definitely things it can go towards.
Yeah.
Emily, do you have, do you want to make any comments or ask any questions?
No.
Laura, do you want to make any comments or ask any questions?
I have a lot of opinions about it. I think that a lot of people worked, like, like Mandy said, a lot of people worked very hard to advocate for the state to give us more money and to talk about the need for more money and the effect it'll have on our, our kids. The chair of the select board came out to Boston with us even to advocate for this. Our state reps and our state senator advocated for this. And I think to say we don't need it now, I think that would be false. But I also think it's going to be a really hard sell at town meeting, because we, because of what happened with the budget surplus. And I think it's hard to convince people, we need the money, even though we gave some of the money back. But we, I think we could use the money. And I think that the state increased Chapter 70, because they, in recognition of the increased costs to the schools, and we should use the money. So, I'll vote yes for it. I have a question, then. Would we be, or would, Dr. Fortuna, would we make these decisions on where we think it would be spent before special town meeting? So, we could present to people what our thoughts are and where it would go, so they would maybe have more interest in supporting or not supporting, whichever way?
That would be my suggestion, if we're going to ask for this money. I mean, I do think there is the consideration that, that, you know, Dr. Fortuna and Chris have a lot of finance stuff they're working on, you know, over the last, you know, between FY25, FY26, FY27. So, you know, I do think that there has been conversation with some of the select board members, who have talked about this and, you know, are, I know at least our former school committee member, Brian Leighton, has asked about it some. And, I mean, I don't think it's an easy, I don't think it, there isn't... Let me rephrase. I'm using too many negatives, right? I do, I do think there are some legitimate arguments for the fact that, you know, we want to make sure that we are spending this money wisely and we are prepared to spend it wisely, right? And I do think that that is something that, you know, we should consider. But on the other hand, I just feel very strongly, the reason that I ran for office and the reason I joined this committee is because I wanted to do this kind of work. And there are needs in other parts of the town. I understand that. But it just feels pretty clear to me that the legislature put it in Chapter 70 and education funding, so it just, it feels like to me that that's where it should go. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I guess I'm just wondering if we were to leave it less open-ended, people may be more willing to support.
Yeah. Because I, to your point, as a citizen, if the school is just saying, "Give us the money, we'll figure out what to spend on it."
Right, that's what I'm thinking, like...
I'm voting no, I mean...
I'm voting no, I mean.
At town meeting.
I, I'm voting no at town meeting because no, you guys gave back so much money and I don't know what you're going to spend on.
But I just don't know.
But if we have a plan for it and say, we're going to increase paras in the kindergarten and we're going to supplement paras in the fourth grade or, you know, we're going to increase MTSS because reading score, the, the.
I just don't know if that's feasible by November 18th.
Right, I, I mean, I do.
That's what I'm, I guess that's what I'm just putting out there, like, do.
I don't think it's feasible by November 18th.
To come up with a plan?
Right now, we are still trying to figure out what happened in FY25, monitor FY26 very carefully and build FY27. Because I know, I could give you a list of things to spend it on, but it would not be a comprehensive plan aligned with district goals, which we.
But I wonder if even that would be helpful for people to see, like, these are the things we're hoping to fill. These are the things we're hoping to fix with this allotted money. If you were to vote for us to spend that, this is where we're headed. Maybe not, it's not going to be in concrete, but an idea so that others outside of this room could understand what we were hoping for, I guess, in order to support or not support, whatever they decide.
I could give you a list.
I don't know.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a legitimate question. I, and I, I know Dr. Fortuna and I have talked about it, but I just feel very strongly that I have to do what I, you know, what I came here to do. And I've asked a lot of people in this town to do a lot of things over the last few years and they have done that for me. And so I, I feel like, you know.
I'm also not disagreeing with you.
I have a role.
I just want people to want to support it.
It's a tough, it's a tough call. It's a tough call. I'm not, I'm not sugarcoating it.
I think it's also, it's an uphill battle, but just because things are hard doesn't mean you don't do them.
That is part of my other thing is just because this may not pass at town meeting does not mean in my mind we shouldn't at least talk about it and try, you know, or at least use the opportunity to present on the needs of the schools in front of a group of people.
Yeah, it's not going to hurt to put it out there.
Right. So, Tony, I'll let you talk now and then, I mean, this is all we have to.
So I decided that instead of just talking extemporaneously, I was going to write down what I said. And just so everybody knows, I sent it to Mandy ahead of time.
Yeah.
So that she would be able to respond.
Yeah.
After much deliberation, I am going to vote no. And here is why. Uh, I believe, first, I believe that the schools desperately need increased funding. I believe that is beyond dispute. We need to do all, we, we need to do all of the following. We need to restore kindergarten paras. We need to purchase touchscreen, uh, touch view screens for LPS. We need a full-time athletic director. We need to repeal the bus fee. We need more robust support for, uh, reading achievement. We need to increase class choice for high school students. We need to lower class size in kindergarten through second grade. We need to fully rehab Turkey Hill and rework the turf field. The fact that we have needs is beyond dispute. Second, I think that a warrant article like this will make actually getting funds more difficult. And that is why I'm voting against it. Our problem is really threefold. First, we do not have the credibility or understanding of our needs at this time to effectively use the money if we were to get it. I think that's borne out by what Dr. Fortuna just said. Second, while it is Chapter 70 money, under the law, we are not entitled to it because the town more than meets the funding threshold that mandates we get the money. If they spent below the threshold, state law would force them to give it to us. But because they don't, it would be a discretionary allotment from the town. Third, I think that doing this will weaken our relationship with other parts of the town in the way that will impact our upcoming budget proposal. There are two other issues that we have to bear in mind regarding this funding. We do not have a plan to spend it right now. And even if we did, such a plan would run into the problems that we have seen in the past with unfilled positions. Even when we hire on-cycle for the schools, we have seen, we have serious problems filling para and custodial positions. Off-cycle hiring will only make matters worse. If we ask for this money and we get it and it goes unspent, both because we don't have a plan and/or because of off-cycle hiring problems and we have to return this money, we will never get what we need come budget season in March and April when we do have a plan and the town is willing to give us the money. That's something I want to make sure everybody is clear on. The truth is that the town has repeatedly given us extra money as promised during budget season. Heather Littlemuir upped the budget after Renee Emke, who was here, got involved two years ago. And Jen gave us $500,000 in free cash last year. They have a track record of doing the right thing. We should make this request during budget season, rely on the prior history to show that we will get what is best for the kids of Lunenburg. This is a fiscal, this fiscal crisis is not caused by the town being stingy, but by flaws in education funding laws, for example, the out-of-district placement costs and the Chapter 70 formula, by strict limits on methods for towns to raise revenue, and on persistent COVID-related inflation. My concern is that asking now is risky, improvident, and damages our credibility. It also, it is also unlikely to patch the holes we know we have right now. We should ask when we have a plan and the money will do some good, not right now. And so I will be voting no.
So can we just have a long, I, I respect, totally respect your position. Can we have a, like, a little bit on our FY26? No, our FY27. I know we don't have a full budget to look at yet. I don't, you know, I know we don't have numbers. I guess what I want to just put out there is I am concerned that we're looking at a level funding but, that we are going to expect, be expected by leaders, understandably because of the financial, you know, the financial constraints the town is under, to be producing some sort of a level funding budget, right? And we cut all these positions over the last two years. And where we are currently, in my mind, is unsustainable, right? So I.
We, we would have had a level-funded budget in, since I've been on school committee.
Right. I mean, a level ser.
Flat-funded budget?
No, like a level services.
Oh.
Like a level services, not a level ser, not a number budget, like a level services budget, right? The last two years, we have not had a level services budget. We have cut positions.
That is correct.
Over the last two, maybe three, no, two years. What?
One. Yeah, it was only last year.
We.
We've only had it one year.
Well, the year before, we cut all those ESER positions.
But that's not, that's not, that has nothing to do with.
That's level, but that's not level services, cutting the ESER positions.
But the, the idea that we were, those positions were positions that we had purposely, they, we knew they were going to be sunsetting. They were not cuts.
They were intended to be temporary?
Yes.
To augment.
So we've only had one year where we've actually had level services.
However, there were some.
But it's not actual level services. Yes, you can say they weren't intended to be there for another year, but there's two years in a row, we were not levels, we were not.
No, no, that's not true.
We cut all those ESER positions.
No, they were not cut. They were not permanent positions. Like, the positions that we got for, some of them were like, we had to bolster MTSS for a temporary basis.
We're talking around each other. So I understand that they were not permanent positions. I am just saying the kids who went to school one year got different level of service than the kids who went to school the next year.
I mean, I, I don't know if that's necessarily true. I think that part of the problem is when we were looking at what ESER was being used for, it was not necessarily for school, you know, public, uh, student-facing support. So like, one of the things that we did was we had a data specialist. And I know that, like, a Title I data specialist, and that got merged with another position. I mean, does that, I mean, I, I, I don't, I think if we're going, this is part of the problem. If we are going to make this argument at town meeting, then we need to speak based on the facts and we need to speak based on what actually happened. And I don't, I, I think that Ms. Emke is correct in saying that we have only had one year where we had level services. And then the previous year, when positions were allowed to expire, that was part of the plan. It was not something that necessarily constricted what students got, though there are, are instances in which that happened. There were also things like we had extra nurses because of COVID, right? Like, that's, that's not something that we should anticipate having.
The student needs were different.
Correct, right.
They needed less services, as ESER Sun said, and that's a hypothetical. I don't actually think they needed less.
So that's fine. So we can talk about, we took cuts one year.
Yeah.
Right? And we can talk about the one year of cuts we took that I feel is unsustainable. If that's, you know, so, so I guess what I'm saying is that I want to have faith in the process and I do want to have faith, I do want to work together. I want to find ways. But I just want to make sure that we, as a school committee, are not, and this has nothing to do with leadership in town. This has everything to do with how we, as a group, are pushing for more funding for the schools. So that's what I'm saying, is I'm saying I am concerned about next year. And to me, the opposite of what you're saying is true, is that every little bit counts. And so I am concerned about next year. And I know we are, our numbers, but, you know, I know our numbers are not firm and there's a lot to be done. Um, but, you know, there, there was some data that seemed to picture us on a fiscal cliff for next year. So, you know, until I see something else that says something different, you know, the document that we were given, which I know has a lot of problems in it, um.
You know, one thing that I, I think is like a really simple way to view this is like, if you are a person that goes to town meeting but doesn't watch every school committee meeting and you see this and it passes and they, and we get the money. And then we go back in spring and we ask for more money. It's, it's pretty easy for that person to be like, well, didn't we give them money already? And I think that what I'm saying is if we keep our powder dry and make it part of the budget process so that it works the way that it, you know, goes through all of the procedures we have set up, we could ask for this money and more based on the Chapter 70 allotment and we would not only have a plan, but we would only do it once. And I think that like, in a situation where the school committee has damaged credibility because of the budget surplus, we want to be careful about how many times we ask taxpayers to reach in their pocket and give us their money. We want to make sure that we do it in a measured way, that we do it in a consistent way, and that we do it in a way that even people who have only tangential contacts with school committee can be like, oh yeah, that makes sense, right? And if we say to them in November, we rushed together to ask for this tiny bit of money, knowing that we're going to ask for more money in April, I'm concerned that they're going to think we've gone to the well too many times.
How many para positions do we have open right now in regards to Tony's point about the difficulty in hiring off-cycle, considering we just added two para positions off-cycle?
I know primary has two openings. Turkey Hill doesn't have any currently. Um, and the high school is all hired.
Okay, so it's not, it, it would, would it be possible to hire more paras?
I agree with Tony that I think it would be difficult at this point in the year.
Okay.
Um, except for the two we just approved.
Also, to your point.
No, I think those are actually going to be hard to hire. I just needed your approval to post for them.
Also, to your point, Tony, we are not asking taxpayers to go into their pockets. We are asking them to appropriate money that was given by the state.
The state, it's the same.
But we're not asking people to increase their taxes. And I, I, I do think there's a difference in that, that we are asking for unallocated money.
I mean, let's be clear, it's all taxpayer money.
It is.
Some of it's filtered through the town, some of it's filtered through the state and then the town. It's all taxpayer money somewhere down the line.
It is. Um, but we are not asking people to.
It's not going to increase their costs. That's correct.
And I think that's important to note. I think if we wait to do this, then this year, that money, we don't get to spend that money this year on those kids. And I, I made this point so many times last year, that kids are kids for a very short time. So those fourth graders in the really large classrooms, you can't go back and give them fourth grade again with appropriate para. They're in fifth grade now and they've, what they were supposed to learn in fourth grade but didn't because the class was huge and the teacher had no backup, they don't get that time back. They don't get to go back and relearn the things they learned in fourth grade. I'm blanking right now on what that fun stuff is. Fourth grade is really fun. Um, they, they don't get that back. And if we, I think November is very early and I'm scared to be doing it, but we, there's no other time that we get to do it.
I guess the thing is, Tony, I think you're talking about, I feel an obligation to the people who did the work to bring the money in and also the, the families that go to school and see the problems that are there and that we, as a school committee, are shirking our duty of asking for money that the state gave to our kids.
I mean, I, I mean, I don't think it matters when we ask for it. I just think that if we ask for it in a more credible way, we're more likely to get it. And what I'm, what I'm concerned about is if we ask too many times, we will be the boy that cried wolf. And if we ask and get it and can't spend it because of off-cycle hiring problems, we will never get it. And so it's not a question of do we need the money or should we ask for it? It's whether we should ask for a little bit now and then more later or all of it in the appropriate cycle during the budget season. That's it.
So can you comfortably say to me that you think this committee is not going to approach the town next year with a level services budget?
I would not support a level services budget. I think we need more things than that.
For next year?
I think, yep. I think we need to restore, like I said, the list is pretty clear. I think we need to restore kindergarten paras. We have class sizes that are built on the understanding that there will be a para in each class, and there is not, and that is very, very challenging. The data bears it out. Kids in kindergarten with large class sizes have a hard time. So that would be something that I would absolutely support.
Yeah, and our, and our MCAS scores are not great. I saw them. I mean, and that's not, I mean, I think that's a statewide problem, but, you know, I looked at them the other day. It's not like our reading scores for our fourth and fifth graders are as high as they need to be.
I also think that I would not support a budget where it, it, we would not. I would not support a budget that had the bus fee in it. I want the bus fee gone. It was an austerity measure when we thought we had austerity-type needs. And now that we know that we don't, I want that gone for all of the reasons that Laura argued. I mean, I, that was the only vote where I, I think I like changed my vote.
I know.
And I, I was sad to do it.
No.
It's got to go. I'm not saying we don't have needs and I'm not saying that we shouldn't ask for the money. I'm just saying that in order to maximize the chance we get the most money possible, I think we need to do this during the budget process. And if I lose tonight, which it looks like I'm going to lose, I will be fine with that. I have no.
Well, I mean, you may convince me. I just, I.
It's kind of.
This is why I don't want to be on the school committee, because I'm crying in public. But it is something I am incredibly passionate about and I feel very strongly that I ask people to take time out of their days and lives to ask for this money. And I, all due respect to the people on this dais who served in the last two committees, I don't feel as though the school committee over the last few years has done enough fighting for the needs of our students tonight.
I could figure out where we could spend this money. Like, give me a few hours.
Well, but so that's the thing, so, but no.
Here's my thing, like.
And it wouldn't even, wouldn't you necessarily need positions?
We hired a person who has a PhD in education because we want an expert to guide us on how to run the district and how to spend money and how to create a curriculum, which is really the three, only three things we do. And for us to sit here and say, we're going to do this despite the experts advising us to do the other, to do otherwise, I think that's, I, I just don't, I don't have enough confidence in my knowledge of school administration, educational policy, and, uh, you know, educational law to override what our expert is telling us. I mean, the town pays Dr. Fortuna a lot of money to give us advice and she is saying, this is not a good idea. So I'm going to say, for that reason, plus the ones I outlined, the reason is no. And I don't think it's a matter of, it, we're, we're like setting this up as like a, a false choice. It's not, do we ask for the money now or do we ask for the money later? We can ask for the money that we're going to ask for now and the money that we're going to ask for later during the budget process when Ms. Lockwood's committee has a chance to vet our request, when Ms. Emke's committee has a chance to vet our request. And I will tell you, like, I know that you feel like there wasn't a lot of fighting, but there were times when, when Carol Archibald was at, you know, four meetings a week for, you know, seven or eight weeks in a row. And if it wasn't for Carol and Renee fighting with the town manager, we would have, we would have had a level-funded budget. But, you know, Renee and Carol convinced the town manager to put more money in the pot despite the fact that. despite the fact that she didn't have, you know, really vocal support. And I think that, you know, like, there's a track record of them doing the right thing. And I, like I said, I would not support, uh, a level services budget. We have needs beyond what a level services budget would entail. And I think that we should let Chris and Dr. Fortuna, you know, create that budget, pitch it to the tri board meeting, and then pitch it to us.
So I'm, so I'm, so I'm fine backing off from the warrant, but I'm glad, I want a commitment that, you know, we're not gonna come in here with a level services budget, because that's just not acceptable to me. Right? I just don't think we have what we-
I'd still like to go for it.
You would? Okay.
I, I'm uncomfortable with it. I'm also uncomfortable with disagreeing with, uh, our-
I just, I, I, I don't, I don't want it to be something that tears this group apart, but I also want to make sure that we are-
Mandy, the only reason I considered yes was because of my friendship with you and my respect for all you did in getting us the override.
Thank you.
If it was anybody else asking, I would just be like, eh. I, I, she said no, so I say no.
Right.
But you're-
But you have to under, I mean, I, I've talked about this, like-
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Like, you know.
I will always-
This is our kids' lives. This isn't, you know.
We're gonna disagree sometimes.
I know.
Totally normal in a board.
I mean, that's fine. And I don't mean to be like, I, I really feel embarrassed that I'm sitting up here crying, but like, I just, um-
That's the way people advocate.
I, I, I'm passionate about things, and I think that's a positive and a negative, and-
No, it's always a positive. Never a negative.
I just, I feel very strongly about it. And, I mean, I didn't want to join the school committee, but I'm here because I, I feel like I have a role to play. And, you know, I have to play that role, or else I'm not true to myself.
It's okay if our votes are non-unanimous, and we disagree on things.
I get that. I'm sorry.
Oh, no.
I want to just run away.
I think you're gonna point out that it's okay when we disagree.
I know. I'm not an adult. I get it. I just, you know.
Because I'm still mad about the bus.
Mandy, you gotta understand, when we did the bus fee debate, I had worked for two summers in law school at Hale and Door Legal Services. I took cases for clients where I got off the tee, and the police said, if you go into that housing project, we cannot come and get you.
Yeah.
It is not safe. I then worked at the public defender for 12 years, and I took way less money than I could have if I would've went private practice or to corporate firm. And so for me, with that prior commitment to indigent people to vote for the bus fee, it broke my heart. It was not something that I did because I wanted to, it was something that I did because under the circumstances, I thought it was the only way to stay afloat. And I thought, I felt bad the morning I knew it was gonna happen. I felt bad when it happened. I, every argument that Laura made was the argument that the angel on my shoulder was telling me to make. And at the end of the day, I was worried that if we didn't do it, something worse would happen.
Well, and this is the thing, like, I, I feel like you're saying we're asking these folks to come up with a proposal too soon. I feel like we're putting a lot of eggs in their basket to be the superstar, figuring out how to fill this big, you know, big budget, making everything work for next spring. And, you know, we lived through a lot of budget cycles where there was a million meetings and a lot of questions, and I'm not saying that people didn't work really hard, right? But that, you know, we, and a lot of, it's always, the last two budget cycles, there's a lot of, it always feels like it's too early to talk about that, and then it's too late. Do you know what I mean? And that is-
We're doing that differently.
Right. But I, I, you have to understand why this warrant article means all of that to me. Right? Like, I don't want to end up in that position again. Like, I feel like without asking for this warrant article and this money, we're basically setting up, you know, that Dr. Fortuna is gonna be able to be magical, right? And come up with a budget that, you know, doesn't go over so much, but yet, you know, fills all our holes, that presents great, so everyone agrees with her, all the budget money is, you know, it just feels like a very tall task.
We do that every year, and it stinks every year. And, you know.
Well, and I would argue we haven't done a great job the last few years.
I have faith in this year. Like, I, I do. I have a lot, I'm-
We got, you know, like, the original request for the first year that we had the budget fight, the town managers, what was it? Was it 2.5 or 2.?
It was 3.1.
No, that's what it ended up being.
Yeah, um, 2.9? It was above 2.5.
2.64.
It was above 2.5.
It was 2.64, and then we got-
2.5, and it didn't have to, it doesn't have to be anything, but-
And then we ended up getting essentially 3.1. So I think that, like, that fight was a meaningful fight. Uh, it made a difference. It was, you know-
I mean, it was a disaster.
It was a disaster, but we got, we got the money. Right?
It was not a fun process.
They gave us the money. And I think that like-
Well, then we got an override.
Well, I mean, they gave us the money, and we got the override.
Right.
Which was a good thing. That's how we were able to make things work with, that's why we have labor peace in Lunenburg, right?
Right.
And so, you know, that tells me that there's a track record with the town being a good, a good faith broker. The fact that the next year, you know, we were looking at a large shortfall because of revolving accounts that were spent into excess, and that got covered up or taken care of by the allocation of free cash from the town manager. So I, I think that, like, you know, we can, we can make it work, but I think you're right in saying that, I, I'm saying this right now, I will not support a level, a level service budget. We have had too many basic things taken away.
Yes.
And like, you know, you, you look at Shanina Burns, who comes on and does all of her, I mean, she's essentially doing two jobs.
Yes.
I've gone to school, like, when I went to talk to Mr. Stevenson's civics class, I went to check to see how she was doing, and it was like, 3, when do we do our talk? Like, 3:30? She was working as the vice principal, and then she was like, running to do the, the athletic stuff until nine, and then doing vice principaling stuff after that.
Yeah, and I mean, I was in the, in Turkey Hill yesterday, and, I mean, it's great we have better outdoor doors. Like, the door that's going into the principal's office is like, you know, they're doing the best they can, like, but it's like being eaten by termites. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Like, there's a door, it, you know, that, I don't know what that damage is.
I always think of Turkey Hill as like the Millennium Falcon.
It's just like, they just keep, so I think, so I, so I, yes, I know. So I, I have recovered, and I, I, I will go with our fearless leaders, but I just want you guys to know that, like, this is, you know.
Are you sure you don't want to?
No, because you know what? I don't-
You have the votes.
You have the votes.
I know. But I don't want Chris and Dr. Fortuna to have to spend the next six weeks coming up for, coming up with something that then every, you guys aren't gonna stand proudly behind at town meeting. Because at town meeting, we need Dr. Fortuna to be the person who says, this is what we need. So if that's not gonna happen, it's not worth the energy.
I feel that kids need the money now.
So.
And if we can get a start on raising our MCAS scores now, instead of waiting for next year.
But it's, it's gonna be, so I'm withdrawing my motion.
Okay.
You sure?
Yeah, I'm sure.
Okay.
All right.
And the Red Sox lost.
Aw, no, no, is it-
Sorry, Renee. Were you, were you, we need to go home to see the scores.
She's not gonna-
What? I didn't-
Don't say-
Oh, nothing. I was talking about the Red Sox.
Oh. That's why she's not listening.
Oh, well, no, no, because last night, she didn't-
It's on the record.
Yeah. It's over, I know.
All right.
But did the girls' field hockey team, did the field hockey team win? Because I'm actually curious.
That's more important.
Can you, can you check?
Do we, all right.
Do we not have live updates on scores?
Okay.
So I would like to discuss a third one.
Sure.
Which is, and I don't know the wording of this, because I am not a lawyer or married to one.
Handwrote my own.
I, yeah, but like, you're, you're fluent in legalese.
I'm just kidding.
Um, like, I speak engineer. Um, I would like to ask the town, so I don't know if we would say, to see if the town will vote and raise and appropriate, and then TBD, we'll have to figure it out. I would like to ask the town for free cash, because this is how it would work, for a best practices audit, and a, I'm not sure, Chris would probably know the wording of it, a forensic audit or a financial audit of last year's books. And it is not because I don't think you can't do it, or you haven't been doing it, because you have been. But I am very concerned, I have to word this carefully, um, I am very concerned about-
Can I, can I just ask, ask you a question? If we did it not as a warrant article, maybe it might help to see if we could, if we have the money to fund it ourselves.
But that comes out of, we gave some money back to the town.
Sure.
A considerable amount.
Yeah.
And I think we'd need maybe less than 10% of it back to do an audit, to audit our books. Because I have, I have to be really careful, um, I have concerns, and I want to make sure that all of our Ts are crossed and our Is are dotted. And it's not because I do not have faith, I just want to make that really clear, Mr. McNamara, it's not because I don't have faith that you aren't doing this, but to go through with a fine-tooth comb is, I don't know how you would do that and also do your job, which is a full-time job. And I have concerns, because there were a lot of hands on that budget in regards to, we had, um, a consultant, and then we had, uh, an employee, and then we also had a different consultant from the same firm. And I, I have concerns about the budget or numbers that were reported places, because we've had issues with that, or things that will come back on us that weren't done correctly, because it is, it's a difficult job, and we have to report to the state, we have to report to the federal government, we have to report a lot of numbers. I, I want to make sure that what was done last year was done correctly. And I also want a best practices audit.
Let me, let me sort of try to sharpen this a little bit. So I, I understand the town manager would support a best practices audit. You are asking for money to do something more, uh-
I want to go over last year's books. I want to know that they are absolutely correct. I want to know that what was done last year was done correctly, or has been fixed.
So-
I want to build trust in the school system by having an outside person do it. I want to help rehab, I want to put people's minds at ease. I want to say, yes, we are, I want to start FY '26, I want to start with a slate of, yes, things in the past were done, and we're not gonna suddenly uncover numbers that were reported correctly, and we have to pay back money, or grants that were done.
So, Chris, can you answer some questions regarding that? Sure.
And I do, I want to make sure, I want to make clear, it's not because I do not have faith in Dr. Fortuna or, or Mr. McNamara, because I, I do. I just think that the level of detail I'm looking for is an unreasonable ask for Mr. McNamara.
So, have you ever been part of an organization that had a forensic audit done on them?
I have been on part of an organization that has done audits, but not a forensic audit.
Okay. Um, so my experience with forensic audits is limited entirely to criminal cases in federal court. And in those cases, the audit was done by basically somebody who was like, they're all former FBI agents or Treasury agents that did accounting. And they looked for criminal activity, or some way to investigate the need for corrective measures in that setting. Based on what you've seen, do you think that would be helpful for us?
A forensic audit or a best practices audit?
A forensic audit.
I'm not sure forensic is what-
I can't say yes or no to that, just because I don't know the town side of the finances.
Okay.
I only know the school side. So, it's kind of a broad question.
Okay. Do you think that the best practices audit that the town manager proposed would be a good idea?
Yes.
Okay. Is there anything in the ma, the town manager's proposal that you think doesn't go far enough? Like, would you add more stuff? If you had, like, if I, if I gave you a magic wand and it was free, what would you want over and above the town manager's proposed best practices audit?
So I haven't read the town manager's proposal, the whole proposal yet.
Yeah, she's made, I mean, it's basically just, I want you guys to do a best practices audit.
Okay. Um, because I was working with Dr. Fortuna on a requisition, or, or RFP for a best practices audit that I can share with you guys.
Okay.
Um, and it includes the scope of what the audit would include, um, and we can, we can share that with you.
Do you know how much that proposal was gonna cost?
I don't know.
Okay. Um, what do you want to?
So I'm not looking for criminal activity, so I'm not even sure a forensic audit is the correct term.
It's usually like, for internal corrections.
Yeah, what, what, what would the-
I think it would be a best practices audit.
Will they look at the numbers for last year and make sure that they were correct?
I believe so, yes.
I think what you're looking for is a comprehensive audit, which comprises a financial audit, an operational audit, and, and compliance audit.
Comprehensive audit?
Yeah.
Okay. Would a comprehensive audit look at the town side too, or just us? Because I, I can't control what the town side does, I can only-
I don't know.
Okay. Do you-
I mean, they could limit the scope to the school system, I'm assuming, um, if that's what they're looking, looking at. Um, but I can't say if yes or no to that.
Okay. Would a comprehensive audit add a significant amount of work to your workload, or any of the secretarial admin, administrative assistant?
Um, it, it would add work to my normal day, but, um, I think it's doable, too.
Okay. Liz, would that add work on you guys?
It, it would add some work, because they would be asking for information from us, but it's not like, it's not information that we don't already have.
Would it be a significant amount of work? I just, I'm-
I wouldn't know until they came in and asked.
Yeah, it would depend on what the, the limit of the scope was, really.
I try to be cognizant of any time where, oh, just do that, like, no, you guys have limited hours, and you're pretty full up already. Okay. I would like to ask for a comprehensive audit. I, I very much, I understand the need for a best practices audit, and I'll absolutely support that as well, but I would very much like a comprehensive audit as well. Uh, and I, I would like to ask if we could use some of the free cash we returned, because the town, uh, it, it automatically goes into the town coffers as free cash. So it's available, and it's unused currently, um, and, because I, I would like to do this audit, but I think, I'm not sure how much it's gonna cost. I'm assuming about 40 grand, but I, I don't know.
I was guessing at least 50. Close, so close, somewhere close to that.
I'm uncomfortable spending school funds on it, because we are tight, and that, I don't want to take that out of the kids' education for things that happened in the past.
I mean, I think we, people need to have faith in the system, so if this is how you think we're gonna get people to have faith in the system, then that's-
I think it'll help. I don't think-
Well, I mean, I, I think, you know, I think that, that's-
And I, I need to know that it's correct, because I'm burnt, and I feel bad sometimes, because I ask you so many questions. And it's not because I don't trust you, it's because I feel that I need to be a better steward of the budget.
So how would we go about if we want this warrant article? Do we have to draft something? Can we vote on it?
Would we need an amount?
Yeah.
Because I don't know how much it costs. Do we have, that's hard to do, without putting out an RF-
A RFP.
Yeah.
Because I don't know how much it costs. Do we have? That's hard to do without putting out an RF.
A RFP.
Can we, can you put out an RFP and then not?
Which is proposals, right?
Yeah, I believe so.
Yeah.
Could we, would we get a response by?
Well, we have to get the number or whatever.
We would have to get the number, but I don't know if we need to have the exact number until there's other deadlines. We could just put it in as TBD and then once we get an RFP and an estimate of cost.
But I don't know exactly what that means.
I mean, we, we would put it on as TBD because that's what we did with the override. We didn't have an exact amount until later. I don't know. I don't know where other people are on this. I just know that this is something I feel strongly about, given.
I agree. I think that we need to have some kind of financial reckoning that confirms through outside sources that our books are good.
And using the free cash. I, I, it would be, I think the wording would just be to vote, to raise and appropriate, but the idea would be it would be coming from the free cash that was supposed to be spent by us anyways. So we're not asking for additional taxpayer money. We're just asking for the money we give back to. Can we just please have it back quickly to, a little bit of it back? Which is why I'm comfortable asking for that amount. But I don't know what other people's thoughts are on that.
I mean, I just think.
Yeah. What if we did like raise and appropriate up to like sixty thousand dollars, just to give us a little wiggle room?
Do you have contacts with accounting firms that can give us roughly or?
So I know of accounting firms, but I don't know who do a best practices audit or a comprehensive audit of all the operations and the financials.
I mean, Melanson.
I mean, I think we do need to think about how much work it's going to be for Chris to do all of that.
I just.
I, I'm not, I'm not saying that, you know, but it, you know.
And the other approach we could take is we know the town manager would support money spent for a best practices audit. If we tailored the RFP and the best practices audit to get what you want, would that work? I'm just trying to figure out a way that we can get this and not draft a warrant article at nine thirty-five at night. And I think we could do it.
We could just say audit.
I mean, we'd have to have the language so that we could pass.
I don't know that the language has to be exact.
No, I don't think the amount has to be exact, but I think we have to ask, know what we're asking for.
To raise and appropriate an additional sum of up to sixty thousand dollars and no cents. For an audit of the, now that would, it would have to say.
What if the town manager is willing to give us the money for the best practices audit? And we don't need to ask for it from town?
She can't without an appropriation at town meeting. She can't just give us money from free cash, right?
She can?
No, I think free cash has to be appropriated at.
I mean, she did it when we got her.
Anna, do you know? She did it for what?
So are you talking about money that's available in the FY twenty-six budget or the money that's available in FY twenty-five?
No, no, FY twenty-six budget.
If she has money.
She can just give it.
She'll have to use it differently. And I think the process is to get an approval.
Maybe like.
I don't want to be talking to them.
No, please. No, I'd like your expertise. I was under the impression that free cash needed an appropriation.
No, 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 I, I'm not saying free cash. I think she could pay for it out of any part of her.
So, so yes. So you, according to, I believe, town rules, I don't know if this is better far. Anyway, okay. I must pick. There we go. I think that's better. So the, on the town side, the town manager is allowed to make changes to the budget within the department, similar to how you guys do. If it's going from department to the, to another department, there she can, she then needs to get an approval select board and finance committee.
Like line item transfers, basically.
Right, right. You know, I think. So. I, I think you guys, this is a good idea and I think it'd be a really good idea coordinated. Like, I'm not sure. I don't know, like, we were just in the meeting yesterday and I wish we had talked about that because I think, you know, the town manager would have some, some information for you that you wouldn't be in this spot discussing this because I don't think. The other thing personally, I think Dr. Fortuna and Chris, they just got here. They need time to organize their house. And then something coming afterwards, I think would really enrich what they already done. But right now the house is a mess in terms of, you know, basic practices. Like closing POs, you know, so to, to know how much money you have. You know, not running, not having your, your revolving accounts running on the negative. So I think there is a lot of things that these two professionals really know how to do it and I know they do because I spoke with them about it, right? I think once they do this cleanup, doing a, a best practice audit, it would be, will be a better time for it. For their sake and what is bringing to the table for.
Yeah, I think that's sort of what I, it's not that I don't want to do it. I, I am just a little worried about the expenditure of time and energy while they're still in the middle of sort of figuring stuff out. Are we, are we going to be able to get a actual clean?
Are we going to get the most for our money?
Yeah, I mean, that's true, right? Like, are we going to get the most for our money?
Because.
But I also, but I also want people to have faith in the system. And if this is, you know, like, and I think this is a way. And not just other town employees, but like, you know, I want people in the public and that kind of stuff. When we come next year asking for money to have, you know, feel like we are fulfilling our duties on the fiduciary side, right? So how do we do that?
So, so like, Chris, what do you have, three weeks now?
A little over a month now.
Yeah, a little over a month, like.
Yeah, but look at all he's done and like.
Right. So I think, you know, I think he will get more, like, because these, I, I think what you guys are talking about, it's not really. It's an audit, but it's not the typical financial audit. I think you're talking about financial practice more on the operational side. It's what I hear. Like finance has operations associated with it, like everything. So, you know, for, for him as a professional, if we hire a professional company to do this, he'll get a lot out of that. He'll learn a lot. But if they're coming in and saying, you know, if we hire them now, they're going to come in and say, oh yeah, you should not run a revolving account on negative. Like, wow, we know that. So I think you're definitely going to get more after you let these two.
I see that, like a best practices audit last month would have just said, don't do that, but that's what Chris came in and said, oh, let's not do that.
Right, exactly.
I mean. But on the other hand, I really want the financial audit and the numbers.
Could we vote, could we vote on a?
Like, so can I just get clarification? What do you mean about a financial audit? Because I understood the operational thing.
I want to make sure the books were done correctly last year.
And so we have a, an auditor for the town that looks at our books, the entirety of the books. And they audit to the state level, like the, at last level. They need to be certified by the state. And they will tell us if the books were done correctly or not. That's pretty much, like, their last recommendation was we had checks that we were paying out and didn't have like expired after a hundred and eighty days that we need to start closing up. So they look at those things.
Did they? Yeah. Is that a very? Is it very thorough?
It, it is on the financial side, just, you know, like again, if we're talking about operational.
Have they done FY?
They have not done FY twenty, they haven't finished, they. The FY twenty-four is about to be done.
I think one of the things that Laura has expressed to me is she is concerned about any exposure we might have for our, our, we. I mean, you can, correct me if I'm wrong, like more exposure on. Like if we got tax, we got grant money and are, you know, are we figuring numbers correctly and is that?
Am I taxes on things we should not have been paying taxes on or if?
Well, we don't pay taxes. We're a town.
That's why I said if, if we were.
Okay.
I'm just, I'm trying to articulate what you've said to me in a different, you know, in a different sort of like.
I, you know, the biggest liability that a town and the school department has is actually employees. And, and that is our biggest liability, period. And, you know, so I don't think we have to be worried about, you know, these smaller grants, like the town received about six hundred thousand dollars in grants outside. Circuit breaker was about four hundred and fifty. And then for cafeteria money, I think on FY twenty-four, we received around six hundred thousand dollars. That's our liability outside, you know, our budget. And people, like, that's your liability. So if you're paying people on time, if you're paying, like, we don't have as much of a liability. Like, I don't see the liability that you're talking about.
I think maybe the, maybe the town, maybe the federal and state lunch program would be a good example, right? Is that, that's something that we.
That's a six hundred thousand dollars liability that, you know, the way you get the refund, most of those grants, also the, the largest grants are reimbursement. Which it means when we submitted information, the state oversaw everything and made sure it was on, in order before they gave us the money back. And then when you look at the, the circuit breaker reimbursement spreadsheet for all of the town, of the state, you see some, some towns get adjusted from prior years. But I, I don't see this liability that you're talking about from outside.
Can I, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Can I ask Dr. Fortuna a question? Can you talk about that? I mean, that was a liability from a.
Yeah, but we're outside with me right now.
But it was a surprise budget. I'm worried about. But I'm, that's my concern, something like that because that does happen and the audit didn't catch that. And then we had to pay it.
Yeah. I, my thoughts on this are pretty much the same that I told Mandy earlier is right now we're trying to close, finally really close out FY twenty-five. Monitor FY twenty-six, put best practices in for what we're doing now. And we're going to have to start building FY twenty-seven really soon, which is a lot on Chris's plate. I think that I, I don't think I know, I agree with what Anna said, is that if we do it now, it's going to be before Chris has finished getting our house in order. And it's going to tell us things that we already knew. And what, what purpose would we have besides our credibility with the town, which I think is important? But I think starting to take measures now to build that credibility is really, like the report Chris gave tonight, right? Really good report. I think that doing that will help to build our credibility with the town and the other town boards.
So several years ago, there was a number that was reported incorrectly to the state. And I, it was before I was on the board, so I'm not familiar with the details of it. And then it took some time for it to be discovered that the number, it was, had to do with the number of students in, enrolled. And someone just instead of using the accurate number, just said, I'll just guess a number. And so we were given grant money based on that false number and we had to pay that back. And that was a hit to the budget because it was not discovered till several years?
Yeah, it's a while.
Several years and we had been getting the wrong amount, more money than, we had been getting the wrong amount of money. And we have been having to pay that back, but that's done now.
That's done.
But that was a costly mistake. Uh, I mean, it didn't, we had to pay it back in the next budget. And I am very concerned about something like that happening. Not exactly that thing happening, but I'm confident that's not going to happen this year because we have the right people in the right positions. And I don't want to throw anyone under the bus. I, I have concerns about last year's bookkeeping. Like.
Well, I, I think. So in the interest of it's nine forty-seven and we still have a lot to talk about. I, I'm not against voting on something that is this, but I just, I feel a little bit uncentered about what we're actually asking for, right? So I think that's a little bit of an issue. I mean, we could ask the town manager privately, you and, you know, you guys could have a meeting and see. You know, free cash is, is allocated at the next town meeting, right? Maybe we build the infrastructure and, you know, feeling of that we are doing a good job over the next six months and then reevaluate then. But I, I mean, I'm not, I'm not against what you're offering. I just feel like I don't know that we are at this point ready to say what exactly we want.
I agree with you, Mandy. I, I would welcome an audit.
Yeah.
I, I think we're not ready to fully present what we want. And I think, let me talk to the town manager a little bit, let Chris and I meet with her. And we'll come up and meet with you two to determine the questions that you want this to answer. And what type of oversight we need, what type of audit that we need to answer the questions.
Yep. Okay. And, but my concern is also how we pay for it.
Well, right, that's.
Because to take away money from students, to pay for past mistakes seems unfair. Especially to our staff, which is out through the past year budget thing. So. And I, I'm concerned about a delay in that, but I'm not sure about paying for it, I suppose.
I think we can just ask the Maytown meeting.
Yeah, we could ask at the Maytown meeting.
Books aren't going to change.
Yeah, they're going to be what they are.
Yeah, okay. Boy, we just got a whole bunch of nothing done, right? Um, yeah, I, I guess. Because if I don't have the votes, I don't have the votes. I still.
I don't, I, I would vote with you. I would just want to know what it is that we were voting on. My concern is that.
The best practices audit isn't necessary at this moment because Chris still hasn't put in his best practices.
But I mean, we could vote on a best practices audit and ask it not to start until February or March. I mean, we could ask for that money, right? For, you know, next.
But what if we wait to see what we can get from the town manager on this point?
Yeah.
And if we're unsatisfied, we can do it in, in spring.
The town manager did email me and say there is opportunity to edit certain line item things that the select board, so if it was something the select board agreed to, I think they could actually in the next six weeks add it or you could amend it. I will find the email she sent me at some point. So that, I mean, that could be a, an avenue for, like, we could ask, you know, them if it's something that they would support as well.
Are we all set on this issue?
Yes.
Do we want to move on?
I'm making my phone.
So I'm going to ask that we table the goals conversation.
Again?
Yeah, quite frankly, I, I don't know how much we're going to get done at ten o'clock at night.
Yeah.
The FY twenty-seven budget priorities, I think, is important. And I, I don't remember our discussion on this, oh, that's under new business, soccer uniforms. So do you want to? Dr. Fortuna, do you want to take them in that order or do we want to?
We have to vote on the capital plan too.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, let's vote on the capital.
Can we do that first?
Sure.
So Chris can.
Yeah.
Oh, God, I'm sorry, Chris. It's in last week's folder, last meeting's folder.
And Chris cut it down so that it's just FY twenty-seven that you're looking at for purposes of tonight.
Did he update?
Is it in the?
That?
Yeah, it should be the updated one that's in the folder.
Is that in this folder?
No.
No, it's in the.
The last week's folder.
It's in last week's folder.
Well, two weeks. Oh, for Chris revised LPS draft.
Yeah.
September twenty-fourth? Okay.
All right, so. This is essentially what we had talked about with Peter. We do not need.
What changed in this? Is the whole presentation the same or is?
The presentation is the same. It just focuses on next fiscal year.
Okay.
We added the turf field onto it.
Yes.
Okay.
We moved that out.
And you highlight, okay, and you highlighted it red to show us what you did? Oh, are there new estimates in here too? Is that what the red is? Chris?
On the turf? No, because we, we don't have enough information yet.
Okay, I meant for.
I went to, I, I talked to Pittsburgh and they just had a turf field put in like a year or two ago.
Mm-hmm.
So I talked to them to see what they, what it cost them. And basically kind of just plan off of that, so yeah. Better idea.
Okay.
So we have the twenty, that's on slide forty-three. Twenty, FY twenty-six capital request committee, school committee priority rankings. And basically for twenty-seven, we would bump down the generator to five and put the turf field at four.
Oh, okay.
Is everyone okay with that?
What, say it again? I'm sorry.
So slide forty-three.
Get rid of the generator.
Bump generator down to five.
I thought we took generator off the list because it was.
Yeah, I thought we did too.
Okay, so take it off the list and put in the turf field at four. And then everything else is the same.
I would like to move security camera server above safety film because they don't, they're never going to give us a safety film.
I don't think any of this matters beyond the first three things, quite frankly.
Yeah.
Because we're getting more like, doing a recommendation to a recommendation to the person who's making a decision. This is like you telling your best friend what to ask Santa for, for, for Christmas. You're like.
Do you agree with that ranking, Chris?
Yeah.
Is there anything you would change?
The only other thing I was talking with Jordan IT was about the, the card access thing that's on the FY twenty-seven. And persuade. And persuade people that that can, that can, that doesn't have to be.
The card access?
Yeah, it's just like the auditorium booth, I think, and the concession stand.
Oh, we don't.
To us, it wasn't a priority by any means, it was a.
You'd.
It would be nice, but it's not a needy kind of.
Need thing.
All right, so.
Uh, what about the mower replacement? That was what I wanted to ask.
That is a need. Um, we just had our biggest machine that we've had for years, it's old, it's from the mid nineties, and it finally.
What is the cost on that? I'm looking, uh, twenty thousand. So that's, is that your number one?
If it was, I mean, for the district right now, yeah, we're going to need that because we only have one other mower. If that goes down, then we're out there with push mowers.
Sounds fun.
But I looked up the, you know, quoted to, to get that same exact machine. It was, it was like a seventy thousand dollars for that exact, a brand new version of that. And we don't really need that, we can get along with, um, probably a big, big zero turn mower.
I'd love to hear that, okay.
Good, so twenty thousand is actually probably even a.
Little high.
Probably even less. So, but that was just, we just maybe put it down to be safe.
So I would like to recommend that we put mower as number one?
I'm.
And then push everything down one.
I'm going to say, because the capital planning people prefer bigger projects, that we leave everything as it is.
Replacement mower is at the bottom, and that's a.
Yeah. But like, we're, we're not going to need a mower in a month.
We're not going to get the money in a month, we, the money doesn't come.
Right.
Until May, and then you got to order the mower.
Yeah.
And then you got to wait for it to be delivered. I think we got to put the mower higher because if, if the mower breaks.
But again, we're trying to, we're trying to make this so that the people that actually make the decision will be inclined to decide in our favor. And I think the driveway at LPS and the playground are the kind of thing they, according to Peter, that they look for. And I also think that the driveway and the playground represent real, like, I know we want to have short grass, but I'd also prefer not to have kids flop off the.
Yeah.
Top of the slide.
I, I'm, I think the driveway and the playground are likely to get funded, but I would like to put the mower higher because it's a need, like, short grass is great. But if the mower goes down and now we've got, you know.
We already had a, a new one, we had one down, we had, you know, they gave us a one, goodness, they gave us one to use. Basically, pick ours up, drop one off for us, so it's kind of like.
I, I have no position, I mean, like, I'm, I'm fine moving it around, I'm fine leaving it where it is. I'm concerned that we're making decisions at ten o'clock.
So I would like to move replacement lawnmower up to number one and then push everything down. And with the knowledge that capital planning makes their own decisions anyways and doesn't love small projects, but we could use a twenty thousand dollar new mower.
All right, anybody have any questions? All right, uh, is there a second on that motion?
I second it.
Okay, anybody have any questions? I've already expressed my concerns, I'd prefer to leave it as it is.
I prefer to leave it as it is, well.
Oh, well, then that's fine.
Then we're tied.
I was just trying to move along.
I think that the replacement lawnmower.
I mean, to be brutally honest.
This is what capital, I, like, I think the driveway and the playground are going to get done anyways, and they voted on it last year and it was very high up. But I would like to send.
Do we ever buy equipment just in our general fund?
Mm-hmm.
So we could.
Would have done that last year.
We could do it this year, I, my guess is that we could do it this year if we have to.
At the end of the year, if we have money?
Yes.
But then that comes out of school budget stuff.
Yeah, but if we give it back, we don't have it anyways.
Well, if warrant article passes. I just, I, if we need a lawnmower, we need a lawnmower.
Oh, my God.
Very basic thing.
All right, what's the votes? All, so we have a tie. And in, in lieu of a tie, I think that we stick with the old plan, is that correct? That's my understanding, all right. So we will forward to capital plan the slide forty three list as it is. Driveway, playground, hot water tank, turf field, safety film, security camera, safety film, and replacement lawnmower. All right, let's go back to the agenda. I am falling asleep.
Is it possible we could talk about budget priorities at another?
Yes.
Forum?
Well, I think that's a question for Dr. Fortunio.
No, I mean, how soon does she need them? I mean, I know that our lives are all busy, but in some ways, could we post a meeting and have a Zoom and talk about it? We, could we all give you our top five and you could take that from some?
Or do these time with the.
I mean, this is vitally important, I'm actually not trying to, right, this is vitally important, but I just, I feel like I am spent.
Can I try to sharpen the inquiry a little bit?
Yeah.
Do we have budget priorities from you guys and the building principals?
We will have those for you in a couple of weeks.
Okay, so would it make more sense to give our responses to those priorities than for us non-educating teachers other than Emily to?
I'd rather hear from the principal.
Opine about what we like and what we want?
If that's what the committee wishes, I think that makes sense.
Can we do it that way?
Yeah.
All in favor of tabling this until we hear what the budget priorities of.
I move that we table this.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, and then superintendent goals and school committee goals. I favor tabling those as well, I do not find these very poignant.
Move to table those.
Okay.
Things till next week.
And then payment for soccer uniforms.
Oh, my God.
This one will be quick.
We're not skipping all of those.
Yeah, all right. So, this is me.
Mm-hmm.
All right, uh, and this is what I think it is?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Oh, no.
My understanding is that soccer uniforms, was there any other uniforms that were impacted?
No, it was just the soccer and football, and the soccer had been delivered.
Okay, so the soccer and football uniforms were purchased without the knowledge of either the previous superintendent or the current superintendent. And the problem was that we received the uniforms and they were personalized in a way that prevented them from being returned. And so the question that we have to deal with as the school committee is should we factor those purchases in to the budgets of the various athletic activities that we set? In other words, this is an unsanctioned purchase and it alters what we spend. Should we go through and alter the budgets to reflect that spending? Not to penalize anybody, but just to make them, you know, make everybody have apples to apples and oranges to oranges.
Yes, because it was only men's uniforms and only two things.
No, no, women's.
The girls got.
Yeah, well, that's for the girls, which somehow makes it a little better.
Those haven't been dispersed yet.
Um.
This is embarrassing, this is ridiculously embarrassing.
This is awful.
We're mad about it, too.
And to be clear, we have known and we have dealt with this already. We are just now dealing with the ramifications of how it impacts every other student.
I mean, it's unfair to the other departments that have all taken huge cuts and, you know, did their due diligence and, you know.
Also unfair to the team that was not aware this was being done.
Of course.
And did not ask for it to be done.
I agree.
And we were just told that we don't need to ask for two hundred K because we couldn't find a way to spend it. And I think it is unfair to penalize the sports teams for things that were beyond their control or knowledge.
I disagree with that because they got no uniforms out of it.
Here's, here's.
They got something.
Here's the thing that I think might be helpful. Would the school board be interested in hearing how the people affected think this should be dealt with?
Yes.
Yes. I mean, so, so explain to me, if it goes into their budgets.
Coaches.
What are you saying? What, so what are the ramifications of the decision we make?
For example, if we allocated ten thousand dollars to one of the teams that received the uniforms and the uniforms were eight thousand dollars. Should that team get eighteen thousand dollars in benefits this year?
Because the budget had to be paid for on, out of FY twenty six.
Correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure I'm clear on.
That is the problem.
Clarification on that?
Yeah, let me check with Chris on that.
Did we get final clarification? Because the order, the purchase order was six nineteen.
Yeah.
For the uniforms.
Of twenty twenty five?
The, the purchased order of.
It wasn't a purchase order.
No.
It was.
No, I'm sorry.
No purchase order.
Sorry, I just want to make sure we're.
The purchase was generated, the invoice, the date on the invoice is six nineteen twenty five, which is prior to the start of FY twenty six.
But we paid for it.
So it is.
You paid for both of them in FY twenty six, that's my understanding.
But that's not, we're still paying for stuff now that was purchased in FY twenty five, and that's why we close that account.
And to be clear, the reason why no one caught this is because no purchase orders were ever submitted.
There was no.
No one knew that this was happening. There was not even a contract with the uniform company. This was a verbal or some other deal that was done. And the uniform company, surprisingly, took cash on, or payment on delivery, which I, I don't understand how anybody does that, but that's what happened. We have tried to.
Return them.
Return them, we've tried to mediate some kind of dispute, we've tried to invoke the authorities for assistance and that was unsuccessful. We've talked to our old lawyer about what to do, there is no recourse in getting the money back, the money is gone.
Did we talk to the new one?
Not yet. The money is gone, and so the question now is, do we have to take an equity approach to how other? I mean, it's not anybody, it's not the kids' fault.
No, it's not the kids' fault.
But it's also, it's also not fair that some people got benefits by not playing by the rules when other people play by the rules and they didn't get benefits.
Right.
I mean, I, I just, it's, I could see.
The coaches saying.
Right, I think, I think the question is, should we ask what the coaches say?
Ten thousand dollars.
No, no, we didn't, I, I'm, I'm genuinely asking. Should we have a public meeting where we ask the coaches how, that are affected, how they think it should impact their budget and like what a fair and equitable solution would be? I mean, anybody who drove down Main Street or Mass Ave in August saw poor sweaty kids asking for money for music.
I know.
Oh, I know.
And they didn't get new uniforms. It's not a great position to be in, I don't think that any of the kids should suffer anything.
No, I mean, I didn't mean what I said about the kids suffering, I was thinking.
But it's just not fair, I mean, like, some people got a benefit and some people didn't. And should we take that benefit into account and reorganize the budget?
There, Mr. Chair, could I propose something?
Sure.
Please do.
That, one of the things that we don't have in place that we actually should have by policy is a uniform replacement cycle.
I thought we did.
We don't.
We had been.
Told we did.
Shanina cannot find one anywhere.
We had been told there was and that.
Well, if there is.
When, when, that it was football and soccer's turn.
Yeah. No.
In fact, that was the basis for our decision when we voted down the requests for the uniforms, that even though it was their turn, we were short on money and so they're just going to have, and I, I remember Carol's quote, they're just going to have to make do with the uniforms they got for one more year.
Yeah, Shanina has found no evidence.
We need to create.
Sure, we can do that.
So I, what I would suggest is we retro it to last year, put football as the priority for last year.
Yeah.
Soccer hasn't gotten their uniforms yet, um, they're still playing with their old uniforms, they're sitting, they're sitting in boxes because we were waiting to have this discussion.
Yeah.
So they haven't benefited yet.
But.
So we could put them on for next year.
Okay.
And give them their uniforms as part of the uniform replacement cycle for next year. And.
But they're there, like.
But our soccer team looks great. Like, I, I've been to the games, they look really.
They don't look like.
My son doesn't care.
Yeah, right, oh, your son's on the team, right?
Do you, do you think that if we did it that way, that we should change their budget?
No.
Okay.
I think we should, it should just be the order, how long they have to wait.
But the football team got there.
The football team got there, yeah.
Should we change their budget because of it?
No, I think we put them on their first year of the replacement cycle.
Okay.
And even though this went against what the school committee voted on, I think that that may be the fairest way, is now football has to wait the longest to get their new uniforms. We'll disperse the soccer uniforms next year.
But those kids who were going to be playing in the old football uniforms are not the kids who are there benefiting from brand new uniforms this year.
That's true.
That's true.
So it's.
I mean, the whole situation just sucks.
No, I, I, I don't want to, I don't want to take any money from budgets. I'm still irritated that the band had to collect money in the hot August on the side of the road and they did a great job, but I'm irritated they had to do it, but.
Are the soccer uniforms personalized with names?
No.
No.
Okay, what was the personalization?
It's the Lunenburg.
Oh, okay. There's very few other places that are called Lunenburg. Have we reached out to Lunenburg, Vermont?
Or Lunenburg, Nova Scotia?
Or Virginia. See what their, that's a cap.
Okay, so it's ten oh nine, so can we move to, are we going to ask the people?
I don't want to, I think just holding on to the soccer uniforms till next year. And then that'll be their replacement, so it's already been bought, we don't have to, it won't come out of the budget for this year.
Right, but I do think there's a level of like, are we replacing uniforms for other things besides athletics, right? Is that, like, I'm not.
I think the band uniforms should be.
Should be on this cycle.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine, I just want to make sure because not everyone plays athletics, so there should be, you know.
I just, I don't think it's fair to take something away from children who had no choice in this, and yes, they benefited, but that was not a decision they made.
Yeah.
But it was important to talk about.
I do think that when we have our first policy subcommittee, one of the things that I'm going to propose is a policy whereby we certify the budget. And then we have all people with spending authority in the district sign an affidavit that says, I understand that spending contrary to the certified budget without the preapproval of school committee shall be grounds for discipline up to and including termination.
I mean, hey.
No more spending like this, this is ridiculous.
And this was a one, we have not had issues with this previously, this was a.
No, this is not the first time. We already talked about the second time. The grant money.
Okay.
So we've got to get control of this.
Yeah, we'll have a policies subcommittee about that, we'll talk to Chris, too, about what he thinks.
Okay.
All right.
Public comment first.
Any public comment? TJ, you're still here, I'm assuming you have a public comment.
He just loves staying with us.
I do. I do. How's it going? Uh, TJ Loughlin, two oh seven, Rolling Acres Road. Um, I'm going to try to be super quick. Um, you caught me off guard, so I didn't have my notes up. Uh, I, I think I remember them. Uh, so the first thing, and I know you guys don't have, um, usually question and answer, so I'm just going to say these as questions. I was looking at this, or thinking about the salary reserve as it relates to the paras. And it got me thinking like how these hires show up for next year's budget line items. So will the line items for paras, IT, and custodians show as an increase next year? Meaning, we're going to assume that the hires this year were increased next year, so when we go to put on, let's say, four, fifty K into those line items next year, that'll, that'll look like a bump? Or do we retroactively reassign the salary reserve for this year's budget into those line items so you wouldn't see a change?
It's a great question, like, is it a line item transfer? No.
What's the difference between budgeted and actuals, right? When, when we show the budget at the end of the year, we look at budgeted. And then there's a column for actuals, and you can see what was actually spent.
But the difference.
To count the line item transfer.
But now you have a, but now you have a permanent hire on a line item. I don't know why my video shut off, sorry. But now you have a permanent hire on a line item, so the total for that line item will be increased. So the actuals don't matter because now the budget line item will be higher than it was at the start of the year.
So I think what you, I think what TJ is saying is that when we propose, when the proposal comes for FY twenty seven, right, and we're comparing against FY twenty six, if we're looking at percentage increases, it won't actually be an increase if we hired the person this year. It won't be that percent, are we, right?
That's the question basically, is when we look next year and we see the percentage increases, are we basically going to see zero percent increase? Assuming nothing changes, because we're going to assume we retroactively move that line this year. Or are we going to say next year that there was a, let's call it, ten percent increase in that line? Because now that line is higher than it was last year.
I think it's a good thing to put on our conversation for going forward. I, I, I know what he's talking about, Chris, so we'll, we'll chat about it. I'm sorry, I'm not supposed to be talking back to you, keep, keep commenting.[1779.94]
Yeah, I know, I know. It's okay. I appreciate it. Thanks. Related question. It is kind of interesting mathematically using the salary reserve as a hiring mechanism. And another question, right, just so to use an example, if we, right now, fully use the salary reserve to hire new people, new positions that we don't have funded, next year, do we decrease the salary reserve based on what we just spent or do we keep it the same? Which may, and if we, if we don't decrease it, does that effectively mean the salary reserve is a perpetual way to bring in new hires into the operational budget? Right? So if, if you, if you don't change the salary reserve year after year, but you keep pumping people into the salary base, you're basically using the salary reserve to keep hiring and now your tax burden goes up every year that now you have to pay additional people, even though that salary reserve looks like you can afford it now, later, you, you're, you're taking that, those people on. So again, I know you're not supposed to answer that question. Last thing, Tony, I'm actually a little confused in what you said about the ESR cuts. You said there was no impact to the kids.
No, I did not say that. I did not say that. I said there are, I gave an example of a ESR cut that did not have an impact on the kids. I said there are certainly possible cuts from ESR that did have impact on the kids, but not all of the ESR expirations had impacts on kids, like the extra COVID nurse, for example, or the person that kept track of, that tracked COVID exposures. Those, those things, they don't have any impact on the kids. I mean, not educationally.
Okay, then the conversation that was being had, I guess I'll just make the comment, was a little surprising and odd because we never talked about those things when we were talking about ESR cuts. Uh, we were very much talking about the many impacted cuts to the students that I was going to list off, the nine and 10, nine or 10 that, that we had, which were classroom teachers and Wilson reading teachers. So I think you're saying you're aware that the ESR cuts did have impact to, to students, which is great. And then the other thing that I'm confused about, and I'll just make this super quick, we just had back-to-back warrant article discussions. One with free money, I'll call it, probably a terrible term, from, from the government, from the state that we had available, that the entire community, I don't know if, if everybody knows that every single person in the community that, that was vocal about the override, including all the naysayers and the people that do, did not want the override, they all told us to seek state funding, additional state funding, all of them. There was never somebody saying, don't take that. And we just said we didn't want that. And I understand the justification, but just be aware that.
TJ, that's not what was said. I mean, you could characterize it that way, but that's not what was said. The reality is, we said, we need that money, we are, we want that money and we are going to ask for it at a later time.
Okay. Fair enough. We'll, we'll see what that means. And then we asked for an immediate taxpayer-funded warrant article, but I know you shut that down, which is good. But anyway, that's my comment, uh, or set of comments, and I appreciate the late time.
Thank you. Anybody else have any comments?
Can I just say one thing I should have said at the beginning? The PTO is selling gear, Lunenburg gear. I know some people have already bought some, but if anyone in the room, I'm sure no one's listening anymore, but its sales end next week and we also have a Great Wolf Lodge fundraiser. We make some money on that and yeah, that's it. So. Buy your gear before the 10th. It's nice because it's not sport related. It's, it's just Lunenburg. Not that the sport related stuff is bad, but just, you know, you can wear it to anything.
All right. Uh, the next thing. Oh, sorry, sorry. I thought you were getting up to leave. I'm going to get up to leave.
I was surprised she was not going to say anything.
All right.
Well, I, I still have my, my feedback there. So a, a few things, thank you. And it's fun to watch you guys talk a lot, but, um, you know, hopefully Tony, one day will get that dream of having a hour and a half meeting.
I know. This was three hours.
I know.
Three hours and 20 minutes.
So the first point I want to make, you know, regarding the discussion of the $200,000, um, I want to make, help you feel better about the community you live in. So, um, and you know, and, and I say this, and, you know, I supported the FY '25 budget, the override. You can, you can see the years of my kids make a town meeting. Both of my kids have been there. So one thing, the way I was thinking about it as you guys were in that discussion, we, we can't, you know, we don't want to ever, the schools should be reliant on state money only. Right? You don't want the town to come across, say, hey, go ask the state. That's all you're getting. And, and I say that because of a few things. The FY '24 budget, the FY '25 budget before the override, okay, had a 4.47% increase. The, then with the override was like 8%, 8 and 1/2% increase. When the state didn't show up, the community got, you know, we got that 2 and 1/2% allotment. The community took a larger cut portion of that to, to support the schools as much as we could. So, you know, I, like, and the same thing for FY '26. I think the overall increase was 3.81 plus $500,000 out of our free cash that supports every capital project that we have. That's usually what we use free cash for. So we little, the community literally took money out of other projects that have urgencies, you know, and you know, like the list of, for capital projects are huge. The community bypassed getting those done to give $500,000 free cash. So I think the community has allocated that $200,000. Thank you for the work that you did. And, and I'm saying, you know, it's probably extra between the $500,000 and the, you know, 1.8% of the school budgets, another probably $320,000. So the community has increased beyond the normal adjustment about $800,000 for FY '26. So I'm glad that that money is going to come in. Likely, the, based on past practices of town manager, is likely just going to fall into free cash for us to use for FY '27. And it could be another situation that we're getting, you know, another chunk of that money is going to, you know, the schools, just as it has been done in the past. TJ brought up a good point about the reflection on the budget. And, um, and I think he was talking about, you know, what we originally budgeted, what are you going to present as budget and the. I'll, I'll add something else for us to think about it as we are adding these positions back. Because we know the baseline increase for budget is 2 and 1/2%, period. Every time you add a new position, think about that you're taking out of that bucket, but, bucket for FY '27. So we're going to have our normal increases for, you know, CBA agreements and everything. And you can start like dwindling down that money that's available. Like you literally, if you want to plan for your FY '27 budget, get your current budget, put another 2 and 1/2%, add your CBAs and what's left is, is what you can count on that is likely that will be addressed. And I'm saying that so that we're not getting, engaging into services that providing that we cannot sustain in the long term. That's, that's all. So that was my comment. Thank you.
Thank you for that perspective.
Is there anybody else who would like to make a public comment? All right.
Yes.
All right, let's do it.
Online.
It's on Zoom.
On Zoom.
I thought it was Liz making a comment.
I thought it was too.
I'm like, oh.
Amy King.
Amy King, Free Gabe's Place. One thought that I had related to the $200,000 was we've had multiple school committee meetings.
So this is Amy King?
Yes.
Amy King, I forget your address.
Free Gabe's Place.
All right, there you go. Thanks.
My comment was related to the $200,000. I, I understand the comments regarding not being able to hire people in time. But there've been many comments about the whiteboards for the primary school or, I know they're not whiteboards, but the boards, um, as well as the fact that it seemed like every supply line has, was cut this year. Are those funds things that could be used to, to bolster those items?
Yes.
That, that was one comment. And then the other comment, I would just like to express my disappointment to hear that we have soccer uniforms that are sitting in a box. We have 14 seniors playing soccer this year, many of whom who have played varsity since they were freshmen in the same uniforms, uniforms that are ripped that parents are sewing. So it is a little bit disappointing to hear that those uniforms were not distributed to the team this year. I understand that there were issues in the way they were procured. I would also say that it has been common knowledge to everyone that there is a uniform rotation policy. It just must not be documented. And, and I'd also like to support the fact that all the sports teams do have fundraisers. They don't do the toll booths, but they all do have fundraisers. So, um, just wanted to point those comments out.
If I could just respond quickly, I know this is comment, but one of the things we were trying to do was to see if we could return the uniforms to recoup the cash. So in the, in the initial stages, we were trying to do that with all of them and it just failed. And unfortunately, because they came in in different ways in different times, we had to treat each of the, I think it was the football and then the two soccer teams as a batch. So we were trying to do that each time in a different way and it just took time. Is there anything else? Anybody else have any public comments? Any topics for future discussion? Please say no.
Whole bunch, but we'll email.
And then I will look for a motion.
Motion to adjourn at 10:25 PM.
All right. All, all in favor?
Yes.
Let's go.